Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of June 24th. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Spanish translation tonight?
Yes, we do. Esperanza Viejas? No, I am not. Michael Gonzalez, please provide Spanish translation tonight.
Buenas tardes. De parte de la mesa de activa. Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Si necesitan ayuda traducir, por favor levantan la mano. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have headsets for the hearing impaired, as noted on the blackboard, for anybody who needs it or the board. Announcements of closed session action. We have three things. First of all, we passed the Casey waivers for graduation for students with disabilities. The motion was made by Harder, seconded by Parker. It was a 3-0. It was passed. Noel and Cordero were not there yet. The liability claim with Ricardo Correa was denied again. It was the motion was by Harder, seconded by Parker. It was passed 3-0 with Noel and Cordero absent. The liability claim also was denied for Maureen McDonald. Was, motion was made by Harder, seconded by Parker. It was a 3-0. It was passed. Vote, and again Noel and Cordero were absent. Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with appreciation.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 5-0. Okay. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, I have a number of introductions tonight. First of all, I'd like to come to the podium Amy Alzina, who is with us to introduce the first generation of students to complete the Santa Barbara Community Academy K6 program and continue then to the Lacumbra 7-8 Core Knowledge Program. So these students have now been at it for nine years.
Nine years. That is a long time of core knowledge. But I also am so fortunate to have Tim Cures. Tim, can you stand up, please? He is the National Core Knowledge Consultant and also a first grade teacher at our school and was the principal, their first principal when they were in kindergarten. And Joanne Keynes, I want you to come up here with me because you are their current principal.
Very good.
And Joanne, I think it would be even appropriate to have you. Hello, Dolly. Yes, I see that. Hello, Dolly. And we have Lucas Flores. Come on up. Aaron Dutton. Benjamin Nelson. Mitzi Perez. Oh, Palma. Palma. Janay Howard. I see Janay. And we have three more students, but what is really exciting, all of these students scored proficient and advanced too, so I thought you might want to hear that in math and language arts. So. And I also want to thank the board for continuing to support the academy. We are now entering now our 10th year in July, so we're really excited and we have a good thing going, so thank you.
Thank you. And also, are there parents of these students here tonight that we can also acknowledge?
Please stand.
Parents.
Well, Ms. Keynes, Ms. Alzina, and students, thank you very much. We'll look forward to watching your success as you go through high school.
Madam President, aye. We don't have a historian among us, but I have a long memory. And I think that it would be fitting to pay some homage to the people who made this happen. You may not know, but the creation of the Core Knowledge Program was a board initiative led particularly by Bob Poehl, and maybe some of you remember Bob Poehl, he's no longer in Santa Barbara. And it was a board consisting of Bob Poehl, Fred Rifkin, Claire Van Liericum, and Steve Porcell, and myself that approved the creation of it. It was inspired by the work of Edie Hirsch, a very, an outstanding historian of education in America, who saw problems with the kind of mainstream education, particularly lack of content in his view, and created this program as an alternative to it. It is now very large around the country. Tim certainly knows a lot about it, and has been immensely successful. So I want to pay tribute to my former colleagues who had the foresight back then to bring this to the public and to get support for it.
I have more. I am also pleased to introduce Debbie Badger and Jessica St. John. Would you please come up to the podium? I understand they have students with them here to tell us about the work of the Wellness Council.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Sarvis, other board members and staff. My name is Debbie Badger, and on behalf of the District's Wellness Council, Jessica St. John from Santa Barbara County Health Department, Chelsea Schmidt, a student at San Marcos High, Alex Kraus, a student at Lacumbra Junior High. We are all here to share the impact the wellness policy has had on either new or existing programs in the Santa Barbara School Districts. We're not going to rehash the Board Brief, so we're here to share. Test scores are only one measure of academic success. Many researchers use other indicators such as school attendance, course grades, teacher evaluations, and whether a student graduates from school. Today, too many students come to school with health-related issues that make successful learning difficult. In order to continue to support academic achievement, our attention must be given toward removing health-related behavioral and environmental barriers to all students' learning. I want to encourage you to sit back this evening for the next few minutes, listen to our teen health advocates and Jessica, but in addition, keep your eyes on the screen behind the speakers to view much of what has occurred over the past year in the Santa Barbara School Districts. I would like to now introduce Alex Kraus, an incoming eighth grader at Lacumbra Junior High School.
Hello, my name is Alex Kraus, and I attend Lacumbra Junior High School. Past year, I noticed a difference in the food at the cafeteria. The food was much healthier and there was many more fresh fruits available. In the first semester, I attended the Lacumbra Teen Cuisine, the after-school program cooking class. We created healthy dishes, and I learned to make new recipes that were much healthier for me. Cooking was fun. In the spring, I left the cooking class to participate in the after-school program. It was soccer. It was in soccer when I began to notice my attitude was brighter. I felt much better about myself because I had more self-esteem. I recognized I had searched out old friends and made many new friends. I look forward to the activities during the after-school on the Lacumbra campus next year. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Hi, my name is Jessica St. John. I'm Project Lean Health Educator with the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department. And I would like to call up Chelsea Schmidt. She is a student at San Marcos High and a member of the Health Careers Academy and has been a member of the Wellness Council this year along with other students at San Marcos.
Good evening. As she said, I'm part of the Health Academy at San Marcos High School, and that was when I was introduced to the statewide youth board on VCD prevention. And then from there, because Jessica's my coordinator for that, I was brought to the Wellness Council. At first, I was a bit hesitant about joining the Wellness Council because I was not sure about how the adult members would accept me as a youth giving input on policies. But I soon found out that they greatly valued my input, and they would single me out and ask me what I believed, and that felt really good to have that power. I believe that it is important for students to be involved with this Wellness Council because the decisions made at the Wellness Council directly affect them in the schools. And I think if they're helping with what decisions are made, that they will be more likely to follow the changes and be accepting and support the changes that are going on in their schools. I have a great interest in pursuing a job in the medical field, and I think this experience has helped me with achieving my goal. So, thank you.
I just would like to close by again stressing the importance of academic success and student health and wellness. When I was a teacher at San Marcos High School, I always would open up my lessons by asking my students what they thought it meant to be healthy. It's common that people connect health to illness, and like there are many types of illnesses, there are also many types of wellness. There's a spectrum. Intellectual wellness is something that we oftentimes are, at the school district and as school personnel are interested in, but I just want to remind you that there is a Intellectual wellness is one. There's also social, emotional, environmental, physical, and spiritual wellness, and they're all interrelated. Many times, our focus is on measuring academic success without seeing that a child cannot be intellectually well without having other forms of wellness. You know, if a child is not physically well, not socially well, not emotionally well, they may not be able to be intellectually well. For instance, if a child comes to school in the absence of eating breakfast, he or she may have reduced cognitive functioning, may not be able to concentrate as well in class, and not be able to participate in the day's lessons as compared with a child who is well nourished. Just like I was connecting that to disease and disability, this child may not have a disease or disability, but by not nourishing his or her body, which is a practice of poor physical wellness, that could be directly related to a decreased academic success or diminished intellectual wellness. So I just want to stress that evidence is mounting that students who are safe, drug-free, resilient, healthy, and have a sense of connectedness to their school, all of these elements are essential in improving our academic performance as well as our school absenteeism rates. School districts can best support academic achievement by supporting overall health and well-being among our students. So I'd like to thank you for supporting the Santa Barbara School District's Wellness Council, and I look forward to our continued efforts in improving the scholastic achievement as well as implementing new standards, policies, and practices that improve our students' health and overall well-being. Thank you.
For the next couple of minutes while we watch the rest of the slides, I just have a little something for the courageous teen health advocates that we had here this evening. I just want to thank you on behalf of the Wellness Council.
They're wonderful pictures. Do we get to attribute them to someone, or are they a group effort?
They're from everybody. There are a lot of them from, the ones in the beginning were from Monroe Cafeteria, a lot from Lacumbra, San Marcos, Santa Barbara High. Harding, that's their opening. All right, thank you.
Not too fast, not too fast. Oh, no.
We're making progress. We're not where we want to be, but we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Those are probably the safest tomatoes in the country right now, huh?
We have made wonderful progress. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts, all of the members of the council. You saw one of the first pictures was the entire Wellness Council for the district. We have students involved. Nancy Weiss is a big part of it. Nancy is our Nutrition Director. She's here, oh my gosh, Susan Horton, we've got people all over here. This is great. Thank you. I do have other presentations to make. Would, Gwen Phillips, would you please join me at the podium? When we search for a school leader, we look for a visionary leader who remains clear and focused on the school's mission and core values, an educator who strongly believes in developing the student voice, a leader who empowers children to pursue their own unique beliefs and dreams, and a leader who models the strength of collaboration. Well, Santa Barbara School Districts found that and more in Gwen Phillips. Gwen was hired in September 1955.
How did you find out that information?
We've been working. You're on the internet, huh? No, 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 you're not. Gwen was a driving force in the 1975 creation of the Open Alternative School, a unique parent cooperative K-8 school. OAS is a school where students, parents, and teachers are actively involved in teaching and learning from one another. 1975, that was just yesterday, wasn't it? On January 2nd, 2001, Gwen actually retired, but not for long. She continued working part-time as an OAS teacher and head teacher, not long after that, serving only as the head teacher for OAS. We understand that on Wednesday, June 18, the school celebrated Gwen's Day. That was Wednesday, Gwen's Day. Gwen, we join your family, friends, and the OAS school community on wishing you well in your retirement and thanking you for many years of service to the children of this community, and we have a gift for you as well.
I'm sure I would never have lasted this long if it hadn't been for the great people that I've been working with, including Brian and Robin, and all of those of you who supported our school and kept it going, allowed us to continue, I guess is what I should say. You know, I was thinking how far back I go in 1955. Lorenzo Dell Army was my first principal, and I don't know if anybody in this room knows that name, but he was county school's superintendent for a while after he was principal of Washington School. And then I was fortunate enough to work with Lloyd Peters, who is still alive in his mid-90s, who was a great principal at Adams School and who had been my fifth and sixth grade teacher. And it's like, gosh, you go back, see, that's where all this gray hair came from. But I think the biggest joy, and it's so good to see the young people up here, because that's what we're all in this for, right? And that's the biggest joy and the thing that carries us along. I also was going to say something to you tonight about my wonderful staff at our school who's ready to carry on and who are as devoted as I am to the things that we believe in, but then most of them came tonight, and I didn't know they were coming. So I just want to appreciate all OAS staff and classified and certificated, and even the X ones that are here. So they're a great group of people, and thank you for your support. And thank you both so much.
Well, I have one final presentation, which is actually an introduction. We have a new principal. How fitting. And that's our principal of McKinley Elementary School, Emilio Handel. Emilio, would you please come up? Emilio started his career as a sixth grade teacher. He also spent time teaching fourth grade with a focus on needs of English learners. He spent time at the junior high level. He was most recently a principal in the Oxnard School District. He has experience in working with a program improvement school. He knows curriculum and learning. And Emilio has strong interpersonal skills, as you will find this year, a commitment to a team culture. He's driven toward higher levels of achievement. He's recognized as an innovative, hard-working, forthright, and upstanding educator, and we are very pleased to have him in our elementary district. Emilio, welcome to our district.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis, Cabinet. It's an absolute pleasure to be here. I want to thank you for this great opportunity to serve McKinley and the community of McKinley. I look forward to many years in the Santa Barbara School District, and I look forward to all your support. We've got some work to do at McKinley, but I'm sure I've got everyone's support here in the district office. Thank you so much.
I believe Emilio's wife is here as well. Where are you? Dr. Malikoff?
Welcomes. It's a pleasure to have you. We're looking forward to the fall, and thank you for being here.
I'm excited.
Now, in the future, we will introduce the principal of Franklin Elementary as well, Casey Kilgore. And I'm sure, well, you've seen Casey before. She came with a mariachi group from Peabody School, so I'm sure you'll be looking forward to that introduction. Thanks.
While Gwen Phillips is still here, I just really want to clarify because I can't believe you're retiring. It's not time, and I hope that you will be back with us regularly to help. Thank you.
We're done, right? Or do you have the superintendents?
Well, I do have a brief report. I know we have a number of other items to get to this evening. I do want to report that most of our schools have finished the year, and we're well into summer school at this point at the secondary level. 1,706 students graduated from high school as seniors. We look back into the 1990s, and this is the largest class, perhaps the largest class ever in the history of Santa Barbara School Districts, 1,706. As you may have seen in the media, and I know some of the board members were in attendance, we also had one student from the class of 1942, a Japanese-American who was sent to an Arizona internment camp, who participated in the graduation ceremony at Santa Barbara High School. I believe that was, what, 66 years later? So he wasn't able to graduate with his class, and we graduated him just a couple of weeks ago. The elementary district wrapped up school this last week and held promotion ceremonies. Several of our teachers were honored as Venico Crystal Apple educators again this year. At the elementary school level, this year's South Coast County recipient was Wendy Cantor from Santa Barbara Charter School. At the secondary level, this year's South Coast recipient was Amir Abosheir from Dos Pueblos High School. Wouldn't she know it? And recognized for her service as an outstanding support provider in the South County was Bonnie Barber from Dos Pueblos High School. At the same event, we had the Teachers Network MetLife Fellows from our secondary district who are honored, Carlos Cohen from San Marcos High School, and Sandy Robertson from Santa Barbara Junior High. And one final note, my office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on the school and district matters. A copy is available in the foyer or in the superintendent's office. And as promised, I put a copy of the city RFP proposal for the 2.4 acres of redevelopment district property on Cayet Cesar Chavez in the June 13th Board Brief. That is fitting because, as I said before, the request for a proposal presents a great opportunity for us, and we have a related issue on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments?
We have one public comment. It is Kate Smith.
Hello, my name is Kate Smith, and I'm your CAC, Community Action Committee for the Selpa, and I have an appointment to talk to Mrs. McNeil. I have some good news and I have some bad news. The bad news is that the Santa Barbara School District is in breach of the settlement contract, and I will be calling Brian Sarvis to discuss that. Santa Barbara really has the best and the worst of schools, and I unfortunately was a victim, and I deserve vindication, so I'll deal with Mr. Sarvis. But really, what I wanted to do was to continue on from my presentation last board meeting because I talked about the education that my child, who is special needs, got in Santa Barbara School District. It started out with Star King, which is a preschool. It's been going for 55 years, and it is a divine model of education. It is child-centered, teacher-directed, and parent-involved. Now, there's a place called Reggio Emilia in Italy where all the educators in the world go to study the system that exists right here in Santa Barbara. But in Italy, with the Catholic Church, the Catholic Church has its hands around the educational system, so it does not exist in K through the 12th grade in Italy. But as I told you, there is OAS in Santa Barbara. And once my children got to Santa Barbara, well, the school saved my life and my family's spirit and their soul. And I am proposing that the school district assist Gwen and the founders of OAS, the teachers and the parents, in documenting the school, the history, philosophy, curriculum, and let it be submitted for a Nobel Peace Prize. I have done this before with the Great Peace March for Global Nuclear Disarmament.
30 seconds.
And it would be, my belief is that my daughter's education, preschool to 12th grade, in this divine model of child-centered, teacher-directed, parent-involved schools exists perhaps only in Santa Barbara. And by getting the nomination for the Nobel Peace Prize, what an incredible way to share the jewel that you have in this education crown. So I've got to call in to Special Projects Barbara Kiani. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda, but I was absent from the March 11th meeting, so I...
Okay, we'll do that one separately.
Yeah, thank you. So move to approve. So, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D1.
Second.
Cordero, Harder and Cordero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Now, let's do D1. Do I hear a motion for that? Move to approve?
Can you move to approve March 11?
Yes, move to approve March 11, 2008, the minutes of March 11, 2008.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And no one opposed?
I was absent, so I'm standing now.
I'm sorry, who is the second? Good, thank you.
And then I'll move to approve the minutes of March 25th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. So, nothing to bring back. So, we move all the way over to the action agenda, to the public hearing on the parcel tax resolutions for the elementary and the high school districts and approval for parcel tax measures on the upcoming election ballot. We have, anybody who'd like to speak, if you could put your speaker slip in now, that would be very helpful.
In fact...
Okay, then if there isn't any others, I'm going to close the public comments on that.
In fact, public hearings are part of this. I'd like to walk you through some of the materials that are attached to this and Robin Sawaski will want to speak to programs issues. As we have talked about this, well, gosh, we've been talking about it since last summer. The board in March approved the study of feasibility of pursuing the parcel tax, or a parcel tax, by contracting with Godby Research. Godby Research shared their findings based on a survey of some 800 voters, voters both in the elementary district and separately voters in the high school district. The results indicated strong support for parcel tax and identified programs of most importance to the voters. Those programs are shown on Attachment A. And just to give you a flavor of that, you will see on Attachment A, under Summary and Recommendations 2 for the high school district, the statements that showed the most support by voters were, first of all, enhancing math and science education, attracting and retaining quality teachers, restoring music arts and theater programs at the junior high school level, restoring reduced class sizes, and enhancing computer and educational technology for our students. At the elementary level, they were enhancing math and science education, again, attracting and retaining quality teachers, again, offering classroom music programs, which is a little bit different from the statement in the secondary district, which includes our junior highs and high schools, rehiring and keeping credentialed school librarians, and enhancing computer and educational technology to students. When we talked to the Santa Barbara Elections Office about our timeline, they told us that we need the ballot language by July 3rd. We have attached a timeline they handed us and since July 5th is a weekend, we need to get them the materials earlier than that. And it is for that reason that we put this on the action agenda tonight so that the board could take action. If the board chooses not to take action, in order to make the November election ballot, we would have to take action before July 5th, so we would be calling for a special board meeting. Well, as we promised in our June 5th board meeting, we've constructed a program and cost matrix for those items with the most support and we've calculated the amounts that would be required for parcel taxes to support the programs. Now, there are a number of ways for the board to go about this. This is Attachment C and I'll let Robin Sawaski talk about it in just a moment. You can see a description of each of the programs as we conceived the programs. This is certainly not a requirement. The board could decide, for example, that instead of funding a certain program at $100,000 level to do a certain thing and that that would require $4.20 in the elementary parcel tax, just as an example. The board could decide instead that we are going to put a parcel tax on the ballot in the amount of, and the board can pick the amount, $19, $44, and that that would be distributed among these items and the board could certainly choose those items, math and science, retaining quality teachers, elementary classroom and music instruction, just as an example. So, the board has, can go about that in a number of ways. To help move along the process, we've also developed potential ballot language and full ballot text. And the board will see those on Attachment D. And Barbara Kiani, who put in quite a bit of work on that, is here to be able to answer your questions if I can't answer them, as well as the resolutions for parcel tax in each of the districts. And you see resolutions in Attachment E. And depending on the board decisions tonight, whether, what the dollar amount would be, what programs the parcel tax would be to support, whether this would be a four-year to seven-year, whether this would go on the November ballot or on some special ballot. I made assumptions, and certainly these are board decisions, but I made assumptions simply to move this along so that the board could act and could act quickly. I assumed, for example, that the board would want to put this on the November ballot at a cost of some $60,000 to $80,000 rather than spend some $550,000 to $600,000 on a special ballot. I assumed that based on the amount of support from voters in this community, that the board would want to put this on for a four-year period, thinking that at the end of four years, we would go to a renewal. That would provide an opportunity to show that we spent the money, spent the money well, spent the money on the programs the community wanted them spent on. And given that track record, then if we wanted to increase the amount, it would be better to do it at that point than to wait for a seven-year period and increase the amount at that point in time. So, I have made assumptions. I didn't mean to preempt board decisions in doing so, but it is vital if we are to pursue a parcel tax, pursue one in the elementary district, pursue one in the secondary district or in both districts, that we make these decisions very soon if we want to get on the November ballot. I would like to allow Robin Sawaski an opportunity to speak to her work on proposing programs because what we told you at our last meeting when we talked about this was that we could give you prices on programs and we could show you how much those would cost. And those costs are shown on the worksheet. So, for example, the very first program that she's described, which deals with science through five FTEs in technology and equipment, might cost some $19.28 on an elementary parcel tax for the elementary district. And that includes a number of assumptions that you can see shown in her attachment. So, Robin, I tried to spare you as much talking as I could.
Can I go back for one second and ask?
Thank you.
Can I go back for one second and ask a quick question here about what you mean by ballot language and whether it means that we have to have the entire backup or is it just what's on the ballot? And does that include all of this information as well?
If you will go to Attachment D, you will see the text of the measure. And included in Attachment D is not only, or potential text for the measure. It's our Attachment D, it's called Exhibit B here, and it's called Exhibit B because that would be the kind of language that you would use in the ballot as the full text Also included is the actual question. And the question... Oh, gosh, we've done this in a little bit of a different way now. Barbara?
Well, Brian, I'm sorry to...
The actual question is, Barbara, would you please? Is in Attachment E. Attachment E is the resolution. And you will see in Attachment E, the Section 7, the kind of ballot language that would be used in a ballot to match that full text. In this case, the first one that you will see, and I'm going to read it because the actual ballot question is simply a 75-word statement, yes and no question. It would be something like this. "To offset severe state budget cuts to our schools, protect the quality of education, enhance math and science education, attract and retain quality teachers, offer classroom music instruction at the elementary school level." So, as you can see, we've run ahead with what the board might include in this. The board might include other programs or might not include all of these programs. And I'll continue. "Shall the Santa Barbara Elementary School District be authorized to implement a blank dollar amount parcel tax for four years with an exemption for senior citizens with citizen oversight," meaning a citizen oversight committee, "and every dollar staying in our community to benefit local schools?" So, that's the kind of ballot language that other districts use regularly and that's the kind of ballot language that we thought the Godby Research in the opinion polling in the survey would lead us to. Barbara, did you want to add anything to that?
No, that's exactly the language that we had worked with, with our council. So, this is just for the elementary.
Ms. Cordero?
No.
Okay, you're up.
I'm sorry, that was answered.
Okay, so on July 3rd, is that wording is what's due or is it also the backup material which includes everything else?
It would be that lang, the question, it would be the full text language and the board should do that by passing a resolution. So, it would be both Attachment D and Attachment E. And what would be missing at that point in going to the Elections Department would be the arguments for and against. And we have a little more time on those.
Okay.
The distinction between the question and the backup text is a little...
Well, the backup text is called full text. And in adopting...
Where does that appear?
That's...
Not here, but in the final product.
In the final product?
No.
You will see in the ballot, yes, you'll see the question, and the question is the only thing that gets repeated when people actually do the check mark, vote for or against. And you will see in the materials that the Election Office sends out, the full text in addition to that question, and you will see arguments for and against.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a really fundamental question. Is this one ballot measure or two?
It's two separate ballot measures. And when it goes on to the ballot, the voters would see the high school ballot measure first, would see the second, the elementary ballot measure second.
Excuse me?
Dr. Sarvis, it's reversed.
Some of us would never see the...
Oh, that's right.
Not even see the elementary.
And if you were a voter who lived in Golita, in Nolita, in Montecito, you would only see the high school measure.
One more question on this particular point. My understanding from discussions about our bond measures is that ultimately the binding legal statement is the question that's on the actual ballot, not the statement, the full text or the argument.
Well, I have invited Nathan Rogers here tonight, who can probably address that
In terms of deciding or in terms of determining what's binding, in determining whether funds are properly expended, a court would look at the text of a ballot measure as well as arguments for and against. All those things would be factors in the mix in terms of determining whether, let's say, the district were to spend money on some type of science project and the question was whether that was proper, well, the court would go back and look at the language, both of the full measure, the language which appears on the ballot, which are really going to be consistent when the ballot is just an abbreviated form of the full measure.
And if the full statement says something that is, presumably it's longer, it will say something that's not said on the question, say it includes an expenditure that's not clear from the question, what would happen then?
Well, if it was in the text of the full measure, which was sent out by the Elections Office to each of the voters who are ultimately going to the polls, then if it's in the full text of the measure, it's going to be something that's a proper expenditure.
And if it's on neither?
Well, if it's on neither, then probably some eyebrows are rightfully going to be raised.
Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm going to apologize ahead of time if I start coughing, so I'm going to try to get through this quickly and thanks, Brian, for adding a lot to it. In looking at the two different high school and elementary programming pieces, I tried to, in the work and what follows with the descriptions and then the matrix on what it would cost, I tried to get as many of the things voters said they would support in there as possible. And I tried to also get as close to what they, what the pollsters also said the dollar amount would be. So, they're both a little bit over and as Brian said, you can go back and forth, you can add to one, you can eliminate. There's lots of options in that, but that was something I was trying to do. For instance, in the high school measure, and the elementary actually, the attracting and retaining quality teachers is inherent in some of those by, you know, having extra science teachers in the elementary district, having more music teachers, and certainly in the rehiring and keeping, or excuse me, attract, excuse me, offering, let's see, restoring reduced class size, that's what I was trying to say in this, in the secondary, because those things have been something that's been up there right all along. So, in the, building the program descriptions, I talked to, I had a short amount of time, so I talked to as many people as I could at the schools, administrators and others that, you know, teachers, as far as what would an enhanced science program look like at the elementary district, for instance. And overwhelmingly, it was that we really love having our science specialists at the school. And so, if we could have one between two schools, that would really enhance our program. Teachers don't have time, you know, to do all the hands-on things. So, we just followed through with that. In both the elementary and secondary, to some extent, the mathematics coach is an idea that is not only supported by the state, CDE, and you'll hear a little bit more about that when we talk about our LEAP approval tonight, but it's something that teachers also appreciate immensely, given our new adoptions coming through with math. So, that was a piece that we put in for the math. As far as the music, those were easy because our music teachers who are here in the audience had, have put together the ideal music program a little while ago, kind of looking at, okay, down the line, what would be the program we want and what would that cost? And so, this represents some of that so that we could be building that kind of program. In the secondary, of course, the, I mentioned earlier, the mathematics program enhanced would be the restoration of the ninth grade class reduction. And so, that represents exact numbers from our fiscal recovery plan. And then, the music art and theater arts was also very specific in that they wanted the voters say that they would like the restoration of the seventh period in the junior high. So, that figure was also easy to grab and put together. The science in the secondary district, the labs that we have, we have a brand new one at DP that's beautiful, but overall, our labs are sorely lacking in upgraded, not all of them, but they could definitely use some updating. And so, in both the elementary, but particularly in the secondary, I tried to grab the last item that was technology enhancement as well and add that into the science because that's something that... and add that into the science, because that's something that is definitely needed for all of our students. I'd say pre-K through 12, as far as being ready for the 21st century. And then, as Brian mentioned, the worksheet on the back has the line item, it has the cumulative total, and you can kind of mix or match, or I didn't go much above the $44 limit that the pollsters said was kind of the place to stop.
Now, one way that this is set up to be able to be used is for the board to go down the worksheet and talk about programs and amounts. Another way that's completely different from this would be the board simply to say, "We think this amount is appropriate, and we will distribute this amount over, and you pick the areas." And I suspect that a number of districts probably do it that way. We'll also call your attention to an attachment that's on the dais, and it's on the side table, and that's parcel taxes in other school districts. The amounts in other school districts range from $59 to $493 per parcel. Oh, I see, there's one in Mountain View where it's up to $1,000 per parcel. But there's quite a range in other school districts. We have not had a parcel tax before. And as we heard from the polling firm, to go out for the first time to achieve a parcel tax is something that you don't go out for at a very high level.
I'm certainly interested in hearing public comment. A couple of comments, general comments. I am interested in moving forward with it. I'm interested in smaller amount for a shorter period of time. Somewhere in the, you know, maybe the $25 range. I think moving conservatively would be a better way to go at it. I have some real issues with, I think that the measure should be as specific as possible, as opposed to an amount for more general purposes. I think that it should list it very specifically. I think it should include information about a citizens oversight committee. I also think that it should include language that the funding will not be spent on administration or administrative costs. That was a fairly large negative argument, and I think that we should just get it right off, you know, the table, that no money will be spent in that direction. But with regard to the technology piece and the lab piece, when you're talking about technology, labs, those kinds of things, the facilities improvements, capital improvements, you could put a bond on a ballot, and you only need a 55% threshold. I think it's really foolish to put a capital improvement onto a parcel tax, where you have to reach a 66 and a third percent threshold. I think, you know, people who know schools, and we have to remember that, Godbe pointed out, 68% of the voters don't have school-aged children. I think we need to be mindful of the fact that people want to hear about specific programs. And certainly with the general knowledge that's out in the community, that with state cuts, that certain programs are off the table. In particular, you know, music has taken a hit. Elementary librarians, elective programs at the junior highs and the high schools. I think that that's the path that we should stay on.
Can I add something? Board Member Harder, it does, the sixth whereas, and I believe it's in both of the resolutions, 42, Resolution 07/08-42 is the elementary, and it says, "Whereas, none of the money raised would be used for administrative salaries." So it does appear there.
I'm talking about in the actual ballot language, because that's the majority of people who even make it to that spot on the ballot are only going to read the ballot language. They're probably not going to look at the pamphlet.
I'm concerned with the process already. If you go out to the campuses and you, and you, one way or another, say, "We're going to ask for a lot of new money," you're going to get a lot of new constituents who want money. And something that started, and I recall it rather clearly, that this started as a response to the problem of performing arts particularly, and the removal of humanities-type electives. And then I look at this, and I see, as Mrs. Harder points out, science equipment. I see math program. I see things that we really should be and are working on improving with general funds. And I went, "How did we get there?" Well, then, I understand. If you go talk to the campuses, "We got money," or "We're going to ask for money," then ask for this for me, ask for this for me, and so on. And already, this is getting more expansive and way beyond the idea of, that it started at. And I'm not saying that I'm not willing to consider that and go there, but I'm already surprised at how expansive it has gotten.
Can I ask a que- yeah. I guess I don't recall this starting as addressing music. I do, I mean, I do recall that it included that. But I thought we were really sort of seriously looking at this as a result of our deficit spending, and some of the budget cuts that forced us to reduce in a lot of different areas. So, I feel that it is appropriate to have a variety of areas included in this. But I do want to raise the question, because this language and the focus of the programs comes from the Godbe survey in asking voters what they would support a parcel tax for. And the voters said they would support a parcel tax for these particular things, which is different than the district saying, "This is what we need." So I think the question is, do we risk asking for other things that we may think are more necessary? Although, I think most of these are pretty high up on the list. But it would be a risk, because we don't know how well the public would support a parcel tax if it didn't include these items. Or, do we go out with what the voters said they would support, and increase the likelihood that the parcel tax will succeed? I personally think we probably should go out with what voters said they would support, given that none of these things are things we don't need. And the likelihood is that if the parcel tax is successful, it may help us free up other general funds that could be used for the areas that we think are missing here. I just think that it's often mis- I think it has been misunderstood in some cases that we somehow decided these were the important issues. And these are the things that we think the district should be spending money on, and at, you know, the exclusion of other things. And so I really think it needs to be clearly understood that the public came up with this list in terms of having identified these as the items they would support a parcel tax for.
Ms. Cordero, I thought that your distinction was perfect and right on. The only question I have is when you said, "Free up other money." I'm not sure that, these seem to be new programs, and I welcome that.
Well, I'm not sure either. And certainly, it may not. Because the whole idea is that we don't have the funds to do all of this, so these funds would be helping out.
I think that's more likely the case than actually it goes to something else.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you.
Ms. Parker?
I have a lot of very specific comments to make, but I would like to hear public comment first. But I do want to chime in right now, saying that I agree. It was the public that gave the feedback, but we gave our input as to what they could, sort of the list of things that they could choose from. I do agree with Dr. Noel that it did sort of start from the humanities side. And also, the public, it's not coming to board meetings regularly, doesn't know all the stuff that's going on in our district. We do. These are just proposals. We can, you can put more towards the humanities, and I hope that we'll get to this point by the end of this particular, I was going to say by the end of the meeting. I won't say that, because I hope it's long before then. But I would, I hope that we can go to public comment to hear what-
Okay. Would you, is that okay with everyone? All right, let's go to public comment.
Well, let me ask, before we just go to public comment, this is a public hearing as well. So should we go to a public hearing? I'm going to ask Nathan this.
Okay, so we open to a public hearing?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will call the first person's name, and then the following two, so that he or she is ready to come up. You'll have three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-second warning. It's Richard Foster, followed by Rob Ramirez, followed by Ann Cummings.
Before you start, one second. I'm closing public comments, so there isn't anybody else I'm taking.
Good evening, board members. I'm Richard Foster. I thought this was a done deal, listening to the radio last week. You know, this survey was done some time ago. Significant economic changes have occurred since you took the survey. We all know about gas prices, housing prices. What's missing from this list is all the significant number of places where parcel taxes have just squandered money because they didn't pass. And it's a fairly extensive list from the ones I've seen over at the GUSD offices. I'm not sure it's worth it. Personally speaking, I will oppose it actively. I have about a half dozen other people who will. Not because we begrudge you the $40 a month, but we're kind of tired of the Jay Paul Getty. Just a little bit more will solve all of our problems. We feel there's not accountability. It's funny, you should be talking about spending money on science technology when Measure V specifically said that some of that money was supposed to be used for that. It was supposed to be used for modular classrooms, which you just spent $11,000 on leases for. None of those classrooms were ever replaced. It was supposed to be done and upgrades. Santa Barbara High School hasn't had a cafeteria in two years. I'm sorry, but your track record on how you've spent your bond money, you've built some beautiful facilities. I mean, we have some fabulous pools. It's just unfortunate, they weren't the bond measure items. So how do we know that when you tell us you're going to spend this on music, we're going to see it on music? Or that through creative bookkeeping, it's not going to be used to increase administrator salaries? We're tired of seeing administrative musical chairs, where people come for a year, six months, two years, move up to the next job, crank their pay scale up, and move on farther down the road. When this district can attract some people who want to stay and do a good job, when we see the district following through, doing what they say they're going to do, such as they told my neighborhood, the loudspeakers wouldn't be used after 8 o'clock. Now this district says they can use them till 11 o'clock at night at the stadium. You know, promises have been made, promises have consistently been broken. The only way to bring change, it seems, in this district, is to strangle you for money. And so we will actively oppose this, we'll campaign against it, not because we want to hurt the district, which, because we want to see some kind of effective change. If you can't get good help at what you pay for administrative salaries, then let's have a bond measure or a parcel tax that's to hire some competent help, for the higher-ups that will stay and do a good job. But please start following through with what you tell your community you're going to do. Look back at what you promised the community, what you were going to do with on Measure V. And yes, you built some nice stuff. It's just, you didn't build what you told us you were going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, because Mr. Foster misspoke and said $40 a month, but any parcel tax would be an annual tax. Rob Ramirez, followed by Ann Cummings, followed by Lynn Rodriguez.
Thank you, board members. My name is Robert Ramirez. I'm a current board member of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation and the past president. I spoke to you a while ago, and it was pretty lame, so I'm just going to read exactly what I wanted to say here. Santa Barbara Education Foundation has had a long history of working with the district in preserving and enhancing programs, most notably, and most recently, the music education program. Tina Finukey, our executive director, raised over $400,000 this year in that regard. And Tina's in our audience today. And we've formed a great partnership with the district, and not only preserved, but expanded the music program in the fourth grade. The Santa Barbara Education Foundation Board has voted to take a strong position for the ballot initiative. And to that end, we are poised to set up a subcommittee to work on the campaign. The Santa Barbara Education Foundation continues to support the enhancement of music and arts, and strongly recommends keeping those areas in the focus and funded from the proposed parcel tax. And based on our history of collaborative efforts, Santa Barbara Education Foundation requests membership on the oversight committee to be formed if the parcel tax is enacted, to ensure that the funds are directed to the programs the parcel tax was approved for. Taking off my education hat, I am a parent, and I have three kids in the district, and I do support seeing our dollars working for us locally. And I think I'm just very weary of the money that does not come to our district, stays up in Sacramento. And I think it's time we take some local control over the future of our kids. So, thank you.
And Cummings, followed by Lynn Rodriguez, followed by Mark Ingalls.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone. I'm very excited about the prospect of the parcel tax. I wanted to use just a moment of my time for clarification, if that's okay. On one page, librarians are included. I think that's the final text of the ballot. But earlier, in all the earlier ones, they're not. And I just wondered if somebody could tell me what's going on with that. Okay, because I looked at a lot of, I went through a lot of different versions, and none of the others had it. The one in NewsHawk and the one on the district site. So I was wondering whether that was just an oversight, because it's an issue I feel very strongly about. Although the current proposals are on the right track, I believe they could benefit from a few changes. If the parcel tax is to serve our students most effectively, here are a few suggestions. First of all, a general note of caution. The polling results are only a small piece of the puzzle. We should not rely slavishly on this information in framing the parcel tax. The whole polling process is flawed, as we all know. And I think that it's true, there's a risk, there's always a risk, especially with a parcel tax. But I think we have to also think of what our real goals are. In the current economic climate, it makes more sense to focus on restoring programs and positions, rather than on creating new ones. In particular, I would seriously question the value of math coaches. Math and literacy coaches have been used extensively in other districts, such as New York City, and there's absolutely no evidence that they're effective. I would not include the science experts, which is in the elementary school, under this. They're great, they work directly with children. You know, the more the merrier that we can have of those. But the coaches who work with teachers, if you ask any teacher, they'll tell you that the coaches are of no value to them. That's why I was surprised to hear that, going around the schools, that had been something people wanted. Okay, so, ma- on the other hand, the restoration of class size in ninth grade would be welcomed by parents, students, and teachers alike. And that's probably the most important issue, I think, for teachers, is class size. I'd also, of course, it comes as no surprise, that I would like to see foreign language included, among the other electives. Foreign language programs have taken a huge hit in the junior highs, at all the junior highs. And if you look around, at really excellent districts, they all have foreign language offerings in junior high, and usually more than one language. We all know that it's a requirement for most colleges.
30 seconds?
Okay. To sum up, two more unrelated things. Considering that this would be the first parcel tax on the ballot in this community, I would be cautious and aim low, perhaps $23 per district, especially since people would be, some people would be paying for both districts. And I also think that a five-year renewal is preferable to a four-year one. So, do I have any time left? Two seconds, okay. Retaining qualified teachers. Again, I agree with Ms. Harder. It's a very nebulous concept. In this district, it means two things. It means class size, it means retention of programs, and it means salary. And I think you can't throw it out there if you don't have some specific things to back it up.
Lynn Rodriguez, followed by Mark Ingalls, followed by Jan Campbell.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Sarvis and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak on the parcel tax. I am here as a member of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation Board of Directors, and also as a parent of a child in the district. As a former board member, I sat in your seat, and I experienced the real sadness of the budget cuts. And they started the first year I was on the board, and that whole process has done a lot to take away from our schools. That firsthand experience has led me to believe, since pretty much the beginning of my term, that a parcel tax would be, a reasonable parcel tax, with the right appropriate priorities, would be a huge help to our district. The Education Foundation has made such an incredible contribution in our community, helping to fund some of our programs. And we stand ready to help the district, you know, make sure the community understands the need for the parcel tax. As you've, as we've talked about already this evening, it's not an easy issue. There's a lot of things that need to be worked out. I'm concerned about the shortness of time on this. November is going to be here before we know it. We have, as a board, agreed to set up a subcommittee and help move this forward, and take a lead role. But we're going to, we have our work cut out for us. There's a lot that we need to do to educate the community about the need for the parcel tax, and about the way the money will- tax and about the way the money will be spent and the accountability for that money. I think that one of the things that's least understood in our community is the fact that our budget, our, the financing of schools in California is very complicated. Nobody really understands the basic aid and revenue limit setup. I don't think very many people understand that we have neighboring school districts that can pay, you know, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 per student more than we can. The inequities of that, I think, are a crisis in the state of California in some ways, particularly for a declining enrollment district like ours. I think one of the emphasis, things we need to emphasize in the campaign is to educate people on what that is and how this parcel tax, whatever we decide to establish as the priorities, will help fill those gaps. We desperately need that money. It will be supplemented, I'm sure, by ongoing efforts by the Education Foundation to raise funds through other means. So I don't think that will go away, but I think this is something we really absolutely need, and we stand ready to work with partners in the community to help that happen. I think that, you know, our schools need the support, our students deserve it, our community will benefit. We need to make sure they understand how they will benefit from better schools. And our, and our future as a community really depends on a strong public
30 seconds.
...education system, which I'm sad to say, I can see that eroding slowly but surely with the lack of adequate funding for the many enrichments and activities that we've had to cut over the years. So I really support this. I'm a little nervous and anxious about what it all means, but I've stepped up to help co-chair the subcommittee and move this forward, so you have my support.
Mark Ingles, followed by Jan Campbell, followed by Lanny Evenstein. I think. Is that what that says? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and staff. My name is Mark Ingles. I'm here tonight representing the Santa Barbara Education Foundation as a board member. I too am a homeowner in the, in the district, elementary district, and also have two children, one in the elementary and one in the secondary district. I'm a parent of two children in the district. I have volunteered to co-chair this committee on behalf of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation in reaching out to the community to obtain the necessary support for a parcel tax to pass. As advocates for public education, we see Santa Barbara Foundation education's role in, in bringing together the other educational partners in the community, in organizing and working together with PTOs and education champions, PTAs and other groups to collectively help to secure reliable funding for the district going forward in the future and make sure that that, those funds are able to flow directly into the classrooms, which, which would be permitted with a parcel tax. The preliminary polling results did suggest strong support for, throughout the community, for a school parcel tax. I believe the community knows the value of a strong and well-funded school district. I think when, when it comes to providing educational opportunities and options for our youth, this community spoke loud and clear and put their money where their mouth is. Voters in the, in the presidential primary campaigns made it very clear that they wanted to see additional investment in education K through 12, that is a high priority in securing their votes. The reality is, very little funding comes, as you know, from, from the federal funding. And we need to take ownership and responsibility, as your mission statement so well says. The community does need to take ownership and responsibility, and that includes the financing and funding, for, for secure funding. The Santa Barbara Education and I stand ready and willing to assist the district in securing these needed funds and doing our part to see that the parcel tax is passed with unanimous support through the education of the benefit this parcel tax would generate. Thank you.
Jan Campbell, followed by Lanny Evenstein.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Sarvis and staff. I'm Jan Campbell. I'm a property owner in the Santa Barbara community, a parent at San Marcos High School, where I am president, where I've been president for the past two years of the San Marcos Athletic Boosters. I've been personally involved in the raising of thousands of dollars for San Marcos Sports. For the past seven years, I've watched the steep decline in funding for our schools, for faculty, facilities, supplies, and every co-curricular activity that students participate, from art to soccer. Every year, I'm alarmed by the budget cuts, and now more than ever, I am worried about the state economy, how the state economy will affect the quality of education here in Santa Barbara. I do not believe that the answer to balancing our ever diminishing budget, as Lynn said, is continuously cutting programs and services. We need to do some serious fundraising. I'm supportive of the proposed parcel tax because I believe, for now, until education once again, hopefully, becomes a priority at the state and federal level, the parcel tax is what we need to begin to enhance and restore critical classroom programs. I believe the outreach to the Santa Barbara community necessary to pass this revenue generator will benefit, will be beneficial, and will raise the level of awareness about the obstacles that our local schools are up against, as Lynn very succinctly described. I don't think people understand the school financing model. Quality education is a community issue. I urge you to approve proceeding with the tax, and I, I guess I'm at odds with most of the people that have spoken here. I think you should make it high enough to make a difference. I don't think it's a deal breaker for people that are trying to buy a house or going forward with their, their housing plans. I hope that whatever process goes forward in terms of implementing the funded programs, I'd like to see some for athletics, but that wasn't in the polling. But I hope that the managing of these funds and the reporting and use of these funds is efficient and fair so that we have, if we have to do this again, we'll have a good track record. Thank you.
And Lanny Evenstein.
Members of the board, Dr. Sarvis, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I, I think it's an excellent report, and I commend you, Dr. Sarvis. I, I think that this is exactly the sort of information that is necessary to make decisions in that, in this area, and that's what would things cost. So I, I think that's the crucial question. If I were to suggest what I think would be particularly appropriate would be, when I, I think that, given the interest the public has expressed in quality teachers, that as much as possible, the parcel tax funds should go toward teaching positions. I think that would make the most difference for the schools and would also resonate with the community the most. I agree with the notion that parcel taxes should be no more than about $25 a parcel. I, I would hope that Mr. Foster and others would, would consider on the merits the proposal, and it's, it's something that, if that's the direction which the board goes. I think that the four-year proposal is also a good one, given that the parcel tax would start in July of 2009. And so I think that those are all good directions. So, to implement that, looking at the secondary district, what I would suggest would be not merely four FTEs in the music art and theater arts, but I, I would say at, at the junior high level, since that's so important, eight FTEs, and then add foreign language to that mix, which would be a total of about $12.62. And then also keep in the instrument purchase, and then the 9th grade class size reduction and the math coach. And I believe that that would be about a total of $21.38 in the secondary district. And since the secondary district has 50, has more than twice the number of parcels, then the...
Time is running. No, it doesn't look like it's running.
All right. I don't know what my time is, so I'm, if you could...
You have about a minute left.
All right, thank you. So it's something that I would, I would recommend, in other words, deleting the science aspect in the secondary district. In the elementary district, once again, all of that would be good, but I would be more inclined to go for three FTEs in science, three FTEs in music, and then retain the instruments and maintenance and the technology and equipment in science. And I think that would be about $24.89. I may be a little bit off on those numbers, but in any event, it's something, and I think that that sort of specificity is what the public would like, would be to say, yep, we're, we're, and I, and I think that to go to the community and say, we're going for $24.89 in the elementary district, $21.38 in the secondary district, I think you'd have an excellent chance of those, of those parcel taxes, of a parcel tax in those amounts passing. And I think that could set the, set the foundation for future good efforts. So, anyway, thank you very much.
We close the public hearing. Ms. Parker?
Okay, before I start getting into my nitty-gritty, I have an overarching question about charter schools. Parcel taxes normally only go to a district. Is it possible for us to share parcel tax proceeds with our charter schools, like on an ADA, in district ADA basis?
It is possible to do that. We would put that in the ballot language. And I'm sure you're thinking that the charter parents and, and schools would then help support the initiatives.
Well, I would really love to see that all the, the children of Santa Barbara, no matter whether they attend a district school or a charter school, get a benefit from residing within the city of Santa Barbara.
There may be one problem in that, which is that the students in Santa Barbara charter are largely from the Goleta Elementary area.
That's why I would like to specify that it be based on in-district ADA, if possible.
Enrollment of students from Santa Barbara.
That live within the boundaries of the city of Santa Barbara, or within the boundaries of the elementary school district.
We can check that out for language, but, but I believe it's entirely possible to say on an enrollment basis or on a proportional enrollment basis, although it could be a good reason to de-charter, too.
Well, I don't see that happening.
I don't think for, for $24.39 per parcel.
I, I do think that that is something that is important for us to do. The, the charter schools, any funds they would receive would be under the bailiwick of the Citizens Oversight Committee also, so they would need to follow the same rules. But I hope that that's something that my fellow board members will consider.
Mrs. Parker, I wonder, as a part of that question, my understanding is that independent, the independently funded charter schools are essentially districts. And, and you're shaking your head like I'm wrong. That's okay. If I'm wrong, then it's a non-problem. If that is correct, then the question arises, well, would, how would that work? You know, because they're effectively their own district. And would they have the ability to go out for a parcel tax? I would doubt that, but do you know, have you got this all clarified?
Well, they're still under our, we charter them, and so even though they're direct-funded, they can't go out for their own parcel tax, even if they're direct-funded.
So you're saying charter schools, only charter schools that are operating under the authority or have been authorized by the district?
Right, which, of which we have three, even though one is direct-funded.
Because if American Charter High School is successful in their appeal with the state, they will be a state Board of Education charter school. They would, they would not be eligible?
I don't know. I'm specifically speaking to the...
But in your, by your intention.
Well, right now, I'm speaking to the elementary, and I hadn't even considered the secondary. We do have a K-8 charter, so I think that for this, for the elementary portion, it would need to just be the K-6 part. And then maybe we do need to address it for, for secondary as well, although there's so few that it probably wouldn't make very much difference. But I personally would be happy to...
I just think there are questions that need, that could be clarified, yeah.
Another topic?
I guess I'll go first with the parcel tax worksheet. For the elementary district, in looking at it for me, we have a wonderful grant called Science Matters that is, dozens of our elementary teachers are currently in training to teach science, and dozens more, I hope, will be taking advantage of it year two. What I see from examples within our own district is that if you train teachers, classroom teachers at the elementary level to, and give them professional development in science, and then give them time to actually teach science, that they do just as well as schools that have brought in science specialists. And so I, I agree with the idea of bringing in technology and equipment to support science, but in terms of FTEs, science specialists, I don't know that that's where our priority needs to be. And also, I think it conflicts with what's going on with Science Matters, and I would hate to do that. My personal preference would be to, to put more funding towards music. I also recognize, however, that all of these are estimates. If we're giving some money, if somebody goes to the charter schools, then this is all just a rough guess as to what we could ultimately put together. I'm not sure if the math coach is the way to go or not, but I, that's something that I would need more information about. In the measure, Attachment D, it says rehiring and keeping credentialed school librarians is part of it. I strongly support that, however, we absolutely do not have the money for it. We wouldn't have it at the $48, $47.33 level, and we don't have it at the level that I support, which is $25. So I think that that needs to be removed, unfortunately, but my goal for that would be to come back with it maybe in four years or beyond. And then for the secondary district, I agree with Mrs. Harder that updating seven labs is something that would be more appropriate for a facilities bond. I prefer to see money spent on things that we can't get through a bond. But again, I would support the technology and equipment part of it. Class size reduction is great. In both cases, on the resolutions, they have enhancing computer and educational technology to students. I would love to add enhancing computer and educational technology and instruction to students, given that that might be something that in a few years, it could be that we've gotten these computer, computers in, and we need a specialist teacher to come in and teach a specific program that's now available on them. So I would like that sort of flexibility in the measure. And for the high school district, I would, I do think it's important for us to remember that we will still have, for the junior high electives, there's academic electives that this wouldn't support. There's things like woodshop and, you know, video production that this would not support. I do think it's important that we put foreign languages into the ballot language and into the, or at least into the, the full Exhibit B for the high school district. So that it would read music, art, foreign languages, and theater arts, or foreign language and theater arts programs at the junior high. And I think that that's, and again, at the high school level, I would, I would support about a $25 one.
Could I, could I respond to some of those issues? In fact, I like the thinking about, so what, what should we include and what should we not include? And, and the amounts are important because we obviously can't fund everything. In fact, a number of speakers raised questions about which programs would be included. Well, that's clearly up to the board as to which programs get listed. And what the board won't do, will not do, is to say, and science education will get, you know, 20% of that, and retaining quality teachers will get 10% of that, or even dollar amounts. I mean, it's simply the areas. From the polling, there are simply five areas that, and we stopped at that point, and we could have gone on, but there were simply five areas of interest from the polling, and they were math and science, quality teachers, classroom music, I'm talking about the elementary level for a moment, credentialed school librarians, computers and technology. It's important to be realistic about the costs. In fact, that's why we created this document, so that the board could have some perspective. As an example, if the board said, well, we really want to have credentialed librarians in place, that would cost $20 in the elementary parcel tax. If the board wants to go for a $25 parcel tax in the elementary district, then I wouldn't recommend putting very many other items on in addition to credentialed librarians. As this attachment reads right now, the, the full text language that's, that's marked Attachment D, it has all five of those items. It has, let's see, rehiring and keeping credentialed school librarians in it. So we'd have to make changes to the text here. So we'd have to make changes to the text here as we're doing.
Yeah, that's, that's the line that I think unfortunately, uh, given the amount of money that we'd bring in realistically, that, that line needs to be removed.
Uh, deciding what the money should be used for is, is clearly the task of the board. And whether they heed the advice of the polling firm is entirely up to the board. Uh, there are districts that have ignored the survey results. I don't know what percent were successful. I do know that many of them were not successful. Uh, I mean, there, there is some basis for doing the polling, and that's why we spent thirty thousand dollars? Thirty thousand dollars on the, on the survey. I mean, we thought that the results would give us good information about what voters in this community would support.
Dr. Sarvis, it is not ignoring their advice to say that out of a list of ten possible ways to spend the money, we're only going to focus on two or three.
No, not at all.
They're telling us that, they're giving us information about the probabilities of those two or three being successful.
Exactly so.
But I, I, I shared the sentiment that was expressed by someone earlier that, I don't, I'd hate to see this thing be poll-driven. The polls are too fallible, and there are some, at least one question in it that is just so ambiguous, it could have meant anything to anybody.
Well, and that's, and that's why I've said a number of times that this is entirely up to the board.
I really appreciate that, because I think it has to be policy-driven and priorities-driven, and we're the priority setters.
Ms. Cardero?
No, I was just wondering if Dr. Sarvis was, had completed his, his comments.
Well, uh, simply, the, the bottom line is really that in our discussion, I mean, what we need to know if we're going to go ahead on these uh, is really two things at this point. And so there's certainly other things to consider or reconsider or decide, but which areas and what amount?
The what amount sounds like we're pretty much in agreement. It was what I, I've heard a little bit of, so we'll, we can start with that if you want to. Or do you want to start with the areas?
I'm sorry, what amount?
Yeah, the amount.
Um, in agreement?
I heard from Ms. Parker, the twenty-five dollars. I'm, for each district. Do I hear? Do I hear any, I'm, I'm in agreement. I thought I heard that from Ms. Harder, but I, I'm not sure.
Well, I think um-
I just have a procedural question, if I can interrupt you for a second. I know you have substantive issues. A procedural question, just that it's eight-thirty.
Yeah.
We have a big agenda.
Yeah.
And I actually, I am, while I want to have more substantive discussion this evening, and I don't mind putting off some other agenda items, I, I'm not sure I want to sit here and wordsmith tonight either. Um, so while I want to have more substantive discussion, I still think that I would like to come back to seeing a clean copy um, and an opportunity to, to spend some time wordsmithing it at another meeting. Now, I don't know whether that's possible time-wise. I don't know what the tolerance level is of my fellow board members for another meeting. I think this is important enough that we not try and quickly rip through it tonight.
Although we should have direction.
Correct.
I, I agree, although I'm not going to be able to come to, I'm going to be out of town. But I do agree, there should be another meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I share Mrs. Harder's sentiment. Although I, I don't share the idea that we'd want to bring it back to a, a special meeting where there's not attendance. I mean, this, this was billed as a public hearing, and the public is here, and it's obviously an interested public. And I think that subsequent deliberations need to, to be in front of the public, and indeed invite more public input.
Cardero? Um, responding to that, I, I have a real concern about delaying this because I think those members of the public who have agreed that they're willing to take this on and participate um, in the efforts that it's going to take to promote this, um, really need to have as much time as they can. And they need to have, I think, an answer as quickly as they can, so they know whether they're, when they're moving forward. So if we are, I would actually at, like to at least have a sense in, even if we have to do it in concept, that we want to move forward with the parcel tax tonight.
Absolutely.
But if we have to bring it back in terms of talking about the amount and the duration and the, the, um, the programs or areas that we want to focus on, then I would recommend that we do it at a, at a um, special meeting because we don't have another regular meeting scheduled for quite a while. We would, I think we would really be very, we would miss the July third cutoff. And if we miss the November election, we will be spending an enormous amount of money that the district does not have to spend if we can make the November election. Um, I would, I would hate to, not, number one, I would hate to have, have to spend that much money. And number two, I would hate to have it be an argument um, in the public's mind as to our, you know, careless financial, you know.
So can I summarize? But I, I agree, we need, we need tonight is clear direction. We need to know, I think, the time. We need to know pretty much where we're going with this, so that the public knows that. And that's all we would do at a special meeting is really is the, the fine tuning and the word, wordsmithing. Does that sound like a direction? We need to keep going, yes.
Well, I, I haven't gone down my list yet.
Yeah, and that's-
I'd like to do that, and, and I don't think Mrs. Cardero would do that.
I'm, I think we should.
I would defer to Mrs. Cardero, if she would like to.
Go ahead. Well-
Start first.
Well, I had some, some, first of all, um, I was looking at if we did a twenty-five dollar parcel tax, I think we would raise about one point three million. Does, maybe Mr. Smith has these numbers. But I think that would be about one point three million in the secondary district, and about six hundred thousand in the elementary district. I'm hoping, I hope I'm not totally wrong. Um, so I'm wondering, those amounts, do those, because I think, I don't want us to get into a position where we go out for the parcel tax, and then we don't raise enough money to actually accomplish any of the things we say we're going to do. So I want to know if those amounts are going to be-
One point three in the secondary, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand in the elementary.
Yeah, so about six hundred thousand. Okay, so I was, um, so, uh, to me, one point three in the secondary seems like it's a, a tidy amount. I'm not certain about the six hundred thousand in this elementary, but I think it seems appropriate. Um, so if we're looking at those amounts, that's, well, that's the amount we're talking about. So that was one thing, and then the other thing was, um, but I don't think I, we want to go through it right now. I had some, some issues with some, with, uh, just a very few um, language areas in the resolution itself, but I think maybe we can come back to that at a later date.
I, I know Dr. Noel probably has some very particular comments. I, I just, I just want to say that while I expressed a twenty-five dollar, you know, tolerance for a twenty-five dollar limit in each district, it could be a little bit less based on what it is we're aiming for. I'm not arbitrarily choosing a figure and, you know, times X number of parcels, and, and that's the amount of money. I want to look very specifically at what's on the worksheet and what specific things we are shooting for, and then making our calculation. I, I, I guess specificity is, is the, sort of the watchword for me in terms of putting this together and putting it in front of the voters.
Do you have a, uh, you often have a proposal? Do you have one in this case that you're, no, you're not?
I'm, I'm willing to hear out my fellow board members and obviously hear from the public.
Okay.
Dr. Noel, do you want to make your comments?
I, I have some kind of ballpark priorities that I'd like to express. Starting with the high school district. I, I, I'm comfortable with twenty-five dollars. I haven't done the math to see how that would work in terms of the following priorities, but performing arts and music, foreign languages, and that, uh, class size reduction. Ninth, that's ninth grade, right? Ninth grade class?
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, and math. And four years. I'm unalterably opposed to putting anything in there that would result in teacher salary increases. Uh, not because I'm opposed to teacher salary increases, but because I think funding them on a four-year, uh, finite, uh, parcel taxes is potential, well, it's just not prudent physically. Four years from now, you could lose it, and you would be stuck with this, with the salary increases, which could, I don't know what the impact would be, Mr. Smith, but I assume it could hurt a lot. Uh, so I, so I'm, so I don't like that. And I, and that would apply both, of course, to the elementary district. Uh, the elementary district, I don't see as much. And, and part of that, folks, is because, uh, again, my memory goes back, and many of us do, back to two thousand and three, when, when the high, the high school district had to make cuts, and the junior highs took the hit, all of the hit. And that's when the seventh period day was, was cut, and it began this process of the erosion of support for electives and department performing arts, and at the point where some of those programs were utterly decimated. So, so I, I am comfortable with twenty-five dollars or even more at the, at the high school district level. And, uh, and I've given you those, those priorities, right? Uh, four years, yeah. Uh, elementary, I, I, I see, uh, I certainly support the elementary music program, and, and I support underwriting it. And I, well, I also appreciate everything that has been done by the Education Foundation to provide that, to augment the monies. And, uh, I've always been uncomfortable with being dependent on that because their fundraising abilities, you know, at some point, so many foundations are competing for the same buck. I, I, I agree about the math coaches. I don't see the, I don't, I don't see that. I agree with Ms. Parker. And, uh, and I don't, I'm not, uh, I'm not all that supportive of the science, spending five FTE on science at the, at the elementary level. So my, my elementary figure, I couldn't, as I say, I couldn't do the math, but it could be, it sounds to me like it could be less than twenty dollars even. And, and I, and I am terribly concerned about, because I live in the elementary district. We're comf, we'll pay the tax.
I, I can tell you exactly.
But I'm not comfortable with the double, the whammy that we hit the element, the people in the elementary district.
If you add up the items under music only, it's twenty-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
Sixty-three cents. Could we round up to twenty-four, sixty-five? I'd go for that. So it is twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and then for those programs at the high school, do you have an accountable number on that?
I, actually, it worked.
Sounds to me like it's more than twenty-five.
No, it worked for me if I worked from the bottom up. So if I included everything that was under music, art, and theater arts, the math coach, and ninth grade class size reduction, it was a very modest fifteen dollars and eight cents.
But the problem with that is-
But I'm interested in adding in for, some foreign language.
Well, that too, but also, we're always at risk of cutting what we already have. And so this year, we may be, we have eight, uh, in the junior high schools. But if next year we were to cut four, all we would actually, we could be ending up worse um, if we go for less than twenty-five dollars than where we are right now, because that may change over time.
Are we going to have to make those kind of cuts next year, Mr. Smith?
We don't know.
You'll hear a budget report very soon. But I think a, a quick comment to that effect is in order.
Yeah, because that's a very important point, Mrs. Parker, ma'am.
Based on our multi-projections, we don't see those kind of cuts. But here are the wild cards, as I mentioned at every board meeting, is the impact of the state's budgetary climate. Even though we've reduced our structural deficit, they still have systemic problems. Two, you're still experiencing significant declining enrollment in the secondary district. And although we hope that that'll flatten out over time in our multi-years, you're still seeing an accelerated rate of decline. And three, the impact, if any, of collective bargaining, both on next year and then the subsequent second year on the budget, hasn't really been contemplated. You'll see in our multi-years, we have budgeted a salary increase in two thousand nine, no, ten, eleven. However, you know, all those things can't be estimated at this point in time. So once again, I'm always cautiously optimistic.
So I, I actually sort of hear a proposal. I'm trying to move this forward, which was about twenty-five dollars, that the secondary program would be on the, what's listed here under math and music, art, and theater arts, and maybe adding a foreign language element to that. And then the elementary school district is music. Um, I, I agree with all that. This is only my, my part of the comments was only, is that I don't particularly like the idea of the equipment and so forth for the science labs. I don't particularly like the, uh, science teachers. But I do think we need some sort of science element to it. And I'm not sure how to-
Are you talking about elementary or secondary?
Both.
Oh, both, okay.
Let me, let, oh, I'm sorry.
That's, go ahead.
Let me just suggest that in our talking with secondary science teachers, for example, they say technology, you know, we are really not where we should be in the use of technology. That would serve both technology. It would serve science. It would require, well, it wouldn't require, but we should really have statements about both in this. Um, and they're both popular with our voters.
And it would serve mathematics as well. Um, and that especially, you know, at the elementary level where they have no smart boards and things like that, that could make a real difference for math instruction too. So that's something to think about.
So that's kind of a proposal, a direction? That I, was that a good summary?
I, I just think it's really important to clarify that we want to be as exact as possible, but we can't be as exact as possible. And so I love this music program. I do want to include math and science. If some money is going out towards, um, charter schools, and then, um, you know, we have a number of senior citizens here. The parcel tax may not come up with the amount that we're thinking it's going to come up with. Um, it's an estimate. I think that what we can do is say that we would prefer the emphasis to be on, in elementary, on the music program, but it's not going to look like this exactly. But, but I do think it's important that we, that we, um, put something in place for math and science in both of those.
I guess I'm coming around to Mrs. Harder's position about, about another meeting. I'm, I'm always uncomfortable when I hear, especially when the president of the board says, I hear a consensus.
Oh, and I want to vote. I'm not, I'm not a-
Okay, and, and, and because that's, we don't operate that way.
Yeah, of course not.
We, we have to vote. If we're, if we're giving, if we're, if we're doing something that's giving rise to action, I think we really have to vote.
I was trying to summarize.
I don't think we're ready to vote tonight. So ergo, I'm with Mrs. Harder about another meeting.
Well, I think maybe we're ready to vote on a direction. Because I do want to vote on something here that says that we're moving forward. Because we haven't even said for sure whether we were going to even do the parcel tax.
If we vote and it's not fairly specific, it's going to come back to haunt us.
I agree.
Well, we, I'm only saying that we should vote to come back, to do it more specifically, but here's the direction we want to go in. Or, we don't have to vote. Okay, I'll go, I'll back off, but I just, for our public's sake.
I agree with you.
I'd like to vote on something here.
I would like us to take some sort of formal action that we are going to pursue a parcel tax. And that we, or that at least that we, our intention is to pursue a parcel tax, that the parcel tax will, with, our intention is for it to be approximately twenty-five dollars in each district. And that our intention is that it will include-
Four years too.
That it will be for four years, and that it will include math, science, music, theater arts, um, art, foreign language, um, class size reduction. That we can list some of these items, and then come back with the language for, how are we going to, how are we going to state that? Are we going to state that they're in priority? Are we going to state that it'll be X amount for X program? How are we going to, to determine that? But I'm, I'm certainly ready to, to vote to pursue a parcel tax, to pursue it at approximately twenty-five dollars in each district for four years. So I think I'll leave it at that. That'll be my motion.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Great. Any other discussion? I'm, I'm really-
And my second does not include the, the long list of, for example-
I didn't include that in my motion.
I didn't think so, and I heard you correctly.
May I ask for clarification? I, I thought I heard that, that you were moving that we pursue a parcel tax in each district on the November ballot for approximately twenty-five dollars.
For four years.
For four years. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I, we came in here, I wasn't sure I was going to vote for this. It was- I, we came in here, I wasn't sure I was gonna vote for this, it was the Education Foundation changed my mind, was that if, I feel much more confident about the direction and ability to, to work this out, and so I, I think we can do this. So thank you to the Education Foundation, and it, all those in favor?
I-
Any opposed?
Well, no, I, I'll tell you, you know, you didn't ask for discussion.
Uh-huh, I thought I did, I thought I did, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 my reluctance is, is that, you know, it will be reported tomorrow, well, they're going out for a par, they want to go out for a parcel tax for $25, but they haven't quite decided what it is that they want to spend it on, and I don't want that message to go out to the community, I want the community to hear exactly what we want to spend this money on, and I'm very much for a parcel tax, and for the, a lot of the parameters that we've laid out this evening, but I don't want the message to go out that, you know, we're looking for this amount of money, this amount of time, but we haven't laid out the specifics.
So how do we-
I'll have a motion for a special meeting, just to get that as part of the-
Yeah, um, oh, yeah, that would, that would help me, yes.
Then I, I move that we-
Did we vote on that?
Yeah, we voted.
Yes.
Do you want to step back?
No.
No, okay, okay.
No need to.
Was the vote five?
I'm gonna offer a-
Sorry, the vote was-
The kind of motion that we never offer.
Four one.
Four one, thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer a motion which is almost, goes without saying, but that, that we call a special meeting dedic, for the express purpose of specifying how the funds will be spent.
Of laying out the purposes.
Can you specify how soon that special meeting would be held, 'cause it needs to be quick?
Yeah.
And I would like that.
Can you give us a date, Dr. Sarvis?
Sure. Tomorrow, the 27th, Thursday, the 28th, Friday the-
Today's the 24th.
Oh, 24th, sorry. Tomorrow, the 25th, Thursday, the 26th?
Would there even be adequate-
We wouldn't be adequate time to-
Adequate notice.
It's not, it's not really an emergency meeting, I couldn't do a 24 hour-
No, it's 72 hours, but-
Seventy-two hours.
Here's, here's my suggestion, what about next Monday or Tuesday? I mean, I know we, I know we don't have a meeting on Tuesday, the 31st, but there is another Tuesday.
We could meet Tuesday.
I'm sorry, 30th.
It's the first, it's the first.
Oh, is it the first, I'm sorry.
I think I would be more comfortable, if possible, to do it this Friday, if people are available, simply because then if there's any problems, the deadline for the, this being submitted is coming up so fast.
Let the staff work over the weekend on it, doesn't it?
I'm available Friday.
I'm available Friday.
We worked over last weekend on it.
So this Friday, I am not available, I'm leaving town tomorrow morning, so I'm, but that's fine, I'm on the floor. This Friday?
Friday.
So I heard a motion, was there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes.
It's not, not an elegant solution, but it's a solution.
Yes.
And I appreciate you.
May I ask for clarification, I assume that's a 1:30 meeting on Friday?
Well, she is.
Bob, I assume that's a 1:30 meeting on Friday?
In the afternoon.
I'm, I'm setting the date, oh, fine, 1:30, everybody be here.
Well, I know there are always problems if we go too late on a Friday, so.
No, I, I agree, I think that we do not want to, put it that way, we do not want a Friday meeting at 5 o'clock.
Right.
We have one of those ones.
I'm gonna move on to E2.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming and speaking on this issue, because I know, for some people, it was quite a, a last minute notification, so thank you for being here.
We'll take a, we're gonna take a five minute break here.
Yeah.
Items on our agenda, so let's, we, and a lot of them we have to do tonight, so, E2, public hearing on the '08, '09 budget adoption and approval.
Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, will make this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Education Code Section 42127 requires the Board to hold a public hearing on the budget to be adopted for the subsequent fiscal year. We've prepared the budget in the SACS format, along with the criteria and standards and multi-year projections as required by code. What I'd like to do now is have you focus your attention on this document here, which is the narrative that accompanies both the SACS format and the multi-year projections, and I'm gonna start with a little editorial. Recently, the district's administration staff and board have been challenged with two significant policy issues. One, how to align the district's expenditure patterns with decreasing revenues due to declining enrollment in the state's chronic underfunding of K-12 education, and two, how to improve the systems, operations, and procedures of the district to bolster its fiscal health and ensure fiscal transparency. To address the alignment issue, the Board adopted the Fiscal Recovery Plan that not only identified 4.1 million in expenditure reductions, but also identified areas for future study that would be examined for future savings during the course of the '08, '09 fiscal year. This fiscally prudent action resulted in the adoption of a balanced budget for the '08, '09 fiscal year. In addressing the systems issues, the Board adopted the Business Office Efficiency Study Implementation Plan. This progressive action resulted in the establishment of new positions to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of the business office through improving internal controls, integrating position control with budget development, initiating an online purchasing system, and investing in the purchase of new hardware, software, and training to improve the performance of our financial system. We prepared the '08, '09 adopted budget using assumptions from the School Services of California May Revice Financial Dartboard, and they're included in the review. If you turn to page two, these assumptions are identified. First, on the revenues, we're projecting for '08, '09 that there'll be a statutory COLA of 5.66 percent, but there'll be a revenue limit deficit of 5.36 percent that almost negates the entire increase. As you recall, with the Governor's proposed budget, we were looking at a 2.4 percent decrease over current year, now we're about at a zero. So, the other things that were significant at the May revise is special ed was scheduled to have a significant deficit of 6.5 percent, now we're looking at a zero increase and no deficit. However, state categoricals are still projected to have a 6.5 percent deficit. On the enrollment and ADA side, we use the cohort survival projection method to identify our projected enrollment in the elementary district, you can see the calculations, I'm not gonna bore you with the methodology, you've seen it before. In the high school district, because of our interrelationships with our theater districts and how they enter into the secondary district, we look at trend, and as you can see on page four, there's basically a table that illustrates what's going on in the secondary district. It's important to look at what's going on in the elementary district and the secondary district, because even though the elementary has flattened and looks like it's starting to have an uptick in enrollment, the secondary district's enrollment decline is so significant that the districts are declining overall. One of the things I wanted to note is that in our enrollment projections, we do not reflect the impact of the rescission of the HOPE district's inter-district transfers or any increased enrollment or ADA relative to homeschool Santa Barbara, it's just sheer cohort survival. So as we move over onto page five, we can look at what happens relative to our enrollment projections on a multi-year basis, I think the thing that's most significant is if you look at total ADA in the bottom row of that table listed as enrollment ADA history and projections, you can see in '08, '09, we're projecting 13,360, '09, '10, 13,304, and '10, 11, 13,249 total ADA. Remember, because we're in declining enrollment, we use the prior year guarantee, that means that our ADA for revenue limit purposes is based on the greater of current or prior year ADA, so going into '08, '09, we'll be using the 13,694 number, which was our P2 ADA as of this year. As you move down to the paragraph below that, it shows you what we get on a per ADA basis, both on an annualized and a per day basis, based on our revenue limit, you can see that, you know, for every student that loses a day in the elementary, we lose $30.68, in the secondary districts, it's $36.84, and if you look at that annualized, our revenue limit in the elementary district is 5,522.72, in the secondary district, it's 6,631.83. That's significant, because even though we combine our budgets, because our enrollment decline is significant at the secondary district, we're looning, we're losing more on a unit of analysis basis, 'cause we're losing the higher revenue limit faster. I mean, so if you had your secondary district growing and your elementary decline, it'd be better, I mean, if you had both of them growing, it'd even be better, but this is probably the worst scenario, 'cause you have your secondary district where you have the higher unit or base revenue limit amount that's in decline. Federal revenue in '08, '09 is projected to be flat, other state revenue, as I noted before, which is largely made up of categoricals, is still expected to have a 6.5 percent decrease over prior year funding levels, over this, yeah, prior year. Other local revenue, well, basically, there is a little bit of a decline over prior year, because, as you recall, I believe from the second interim, we receded the Peabody Administrative Fee twice in this year, so it was not booked in '06, '07, so we booked '06, '07, and '07, '08, in '07, '08, so there's a little aberration. And I probably should note that in this report, we don't use a variance report, because we're establishing a new baseline. The '08, '09 budget is a new baseline, so you'll be looking at a variance from first, from budget to first interim, first interim to second interim, second interim to unaudited actuals. What we would show you probably at unaudited actuals when we get there, because that's really dealing with '07, '08, is the variance between unaudited actuals and second interim. So I know I've explained this before, how we're budget monitoring in one year, and it's, we have this overlay, we're in budget development in another year, and we have another one where we're kind of closing the books, which is a, kind of a complicated concept, and I think that's one of the things that School Services recommended that we include in our budget calendar, and I'm still trying to figure out how we graphically represent that without confusing everybody. On the expenditure side, for certificated salaries, we've budgeted 1.5 percent for step and column, also the salary increase is included in our projection there. Classified salaries also has the 3 percent. Employee benefits are proportional to salaries, although we have a cap, we budget a slight, a modest adjustment there to health and welfare. Books and supplies have decreased mainly on the restricted side, because generally, there's a lot of restricted monies that are held in the 4,000s as placeholders, we had a concerted effort to spin down categoricals, so if you look from '07, '08 to '08, '09, you'll see a decline year over year. Other operating expenses have discrete, have decreased on the unrestricted side, really due to us looking at utility expenses and adjusting those to actuals. Capital outlay has been reduced to reflect the elimination of accessibility work that was previously budgeted at the Ortega site, and other outgo, pretty much remains at '07, '08 levels, however, our indirect cost rate is increasing from 4.56 percent to 5.13 percent, which means that's the amount that we can charge restricted programs, which credits the unrestricted side of the ledger. Our ending balance is projected to be 7.44 percent, within that 7.44 percent is the 3.0 for economic uncertainties. We've also had a couple of things we're designated, one is the $112,000 that the Board approved for the upgrade of the financial system, we also have the first payment of the Pur's Golden Handshake also designated in the ending balance. As we move on to page seven, this is just a recap of general fund revenues, transfers, and sources, as you can see, unrestricted and restricted total to $117,0928. If you look at expenditures and transfers out, it's $116,982, so we have a slight operating surplus, and I'll illustrate where that is in a few moments. When we look at just the revenues alone in terms of unrestricted, you can see that the large portion of that is the revenue limit that hits 000 resource, and it's 91,348. Restricted revenues are 25,950 on page eight, and the total of the two is 117,298,314. Unrestricted expenditures are 79,000, 79,972,126, restricted expenditures are 37,000,000, 10,464, for a grand total of 116,982,590. Now, one of the things I was talking to Dr. Sarvis about, you remember, the numbers we were seeing before were all like 121, 122, well, 'cause we were deficit spending, so that shows you the cuts, so your budget's smaller, because we made the reductions. So, that's significant. As we go to page 10, there's a pie chart that shows you the proportion of restricted revenue, including breakouts of special ed and home to school in relationship to unrestricted revenue in the '08, '09 budget. On page 11, there's a brief history of lottery, and then just a restatement that lottery represents less than 2 percent of income in our budget. On page 10, there's some more graphs, the first one's general fund expenditures by category, page 12, I'm sorry, '08, '09 adopted budget, and then below that, unrestricted general fund expenditures by category for the '08, '09 adopted budget, and you can see slight variances between, just looking at the unrestricted proportional breakdown, and then when it's unrestricted and restricted combined, a good example is certificated non-management, you can see that when we look at general fund expenditures by category, we're at 48 percent, but if we look at just unrestricted general fund expenditures by category in that pie, you're at 54 percent, and you can kind of see the, just the subtle differences between two breakouts. The standardized account code structure, SACS, requires us to use function codes, and you can see on page 13, based on the functions that are included in the chart of accounts, this is how our budget breaks out, based on the '08, '09 proposal, and usually, these functions are significant in how we calculate indirect cost rates, and there's certain things we can include and certain things we can exclude based on what CSAM says, but that's just an interesting look at it. And then, on the next page, which is page 14 and 15, this is kind of a, a brief overview of our, what we call our contributions to restricted programs, or a lot of people like to call it the E-word encroachments, and you can see that the most significant one is we spend $15,994,000 in special ed, we make a contribution of $6,941,985 from the unrestricted general fund, or about 43 percent of that budget. Actually, as you know, that amount is less than what it was in second interim, because we were able to circumvent the maintenance of effort requirements and reduce in special ed, which is really kind of a, an anomaly, that doesn't really happen very often, so in any event, that's significant. The other big thing that we contribute unrestricted monies to is the routine restricted maintenance account, and you can see there, that's $3,510,533,000, and that's 3 percent of the total budget, less the indirect cost rate that we can charge the RRMA. On page 15, here's a breakdown of all the, the programs that we make unrestricted contributions to, as you can see, special ed state funding and special ed federal funding are $6,577,155 and $364,083, respectively. Home to school transportation and special ed transportation are $308,50990,220,322, respectively, and as I mentioned before, the routine restricted maintenance account is $3,510,533, and there's some other various and sundry programs, but they're not material. Then you can see that below that, those are contributions we make within the general fund, from the unrestricted side to the restricted side of the ledger, but then below that, you'll see where we make inter-fund transfers to other funds. These aren't technically encroachments unless we expect a fund to be self-contained. I'll give you an example, deferred maintenance, we're making $585,088, but that's a 50/50 matching share program, if we don't contribute our share, the state doesn't give us their share. The cafeteria fund is, we have an expectation that it will be self-contained, but you can see that we're making an inter-fund transfer of $248,257, and then we're transferring a small amount to Fund 67, which is the Property and Liability Insurance Fund, just basically to have enough money to run out claims based on prior claims in property and liability. Page 16, I think really needs to be looked at in conjunction with page 179, and page 179 is the multi-year projection, and I'll go back to it in a few moments, but one of the things I wanted to stress is if you go to page 179, and look at row C, which is net increase, decrease, and fund balance, and you can see '08, '09, you know, there's, what it's showing you there is you're bringing in $176,000 more in income than's going out in expense, but then when you move over to the next column, 9, 10, you can see that basically you were deficit spending by about $36,000, and then- basically you were deficit spending by about $36,000. And then, in 1011, about $504,000. Now, that's irrespective of what you have in the fund balance. If you go down below, you see in the fund balance, you're carrying a fund balance of, at the very last row, about $10,000, $10,000, $9,005. So you've got two different things going on. You've got a one-time pot of money, like a savings account, and then you've got your checkbook, which is what's going on in C. Now, remember I said that in 1011, we have a 2% salary increase? Well, that's forcing you to deficit spend there. And as I said, any adjustments in any of the variables, what's happening at the state level, what's happening with declining enrollment, what happens with the collective bargaining, can adjust these numbers. But the one thing I wanted to show you is that based on the snapshot right now, if you look at C and then flip back to page 16, and you look at that graph where it says net change in unrestricted ending balance, operational surplus deficit, what's showing you in 89, you're bringing in a little bit more than outgoing. Then you see that you're about even in 910, and then you're going the other way a little bit in 1011. So the graphic representation corresponds to what you're seeing in the multi-year projection. Now, the next graph below is the savings account I was just talking to you about. That shows you what's going on with your restricted and unrestricted ending balance, not whether you're building it or reducing it, what you have now. So if not much is happening in that above graph, 910, 910, 1011, then it goes to say that what happens below is going to be relatively static, right? It's not going to go down or up much because you're not deficit spending and you're not increasing your fund balance. You're kind of maintaining it. So it's important to look at those two graphs in conjunction with what you're seeing in the multi-year projection. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So when we go to the next page, which is 18, once again, we use the School Services of California MayReVise Financial Dartboard because that's what the industry standard is. That's our best information at this time. As you can see, we kind of reiterated what the dartboard's assumptions say on the next page. And then, when you go to page 20, we basically break down what the assumptions are in 910, 1011. And as I mentioned before, in the multi-year, there's a 2% salary increase in 1011, nothing in 910, because we don't know how that's going to shake out. And then, there are some adjustments relative to employee benefits, both showing the impact of, the positive impact of the certificated retiree incentive in the out years, as well as the PERS Golden Handshake, as well as some other adjustments. So when you think about everything in kind of a global way, you remember when School Services came here, we had about a $6 million operational deficit. We cut about $4.1 million. We got a little over $2 million, between 2 and 3 back at MayReVise. We spent some more money, so we're right where we should be and where we thought we would be. So as we look through this and look at the multi-year projection, obviously, you know, we're carrying an excess, far in excess of 3% on a multi-year basis. You know, this is what the county office is going to want to see. I mean, it's really rather remarkable based on a, you know, turn of events that's come together. So in any event, one of the things I wanted to identify is that, you know, here's what's happening in Sacramento. In Sacramento, you know, there's been enough pressure that, you know, the governor's moved off, but the conference committees, basically, the differences between the assembly and the senate's version of the budget is they both want to add more revenue, but, you know, the Democrats don't want to cut anything, and the Republicans, you know, don't want to increase taxes. But they're, both the proposals have put more money on the table, and nobody seems to know how they're going to do this. So at this point, we're kind of in a wait-and-see. We have to go ahead and adopt our budget. We don't think it'll get any worse. There's a potential it could get slightly better. Although, as I mentioned before, even though we've dealt with our structural deficit, the structural deficit at the state level is significant, and something's going to happen. It's going to have to happen sooner or later. So at this point, we're asking to adopt the budget as approved, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I would find it helpful if you would come out a little bit about the criteria and standards.
Criteria and standards.
Okay. What would you like to know? I mean-
Well, just walk us through this. I mean, I have learned from past experience that sometimes there are important points that are in very small print.
Well, usually, what happens at criteria standards is, is a, is a series of tests. And basically, those tests look at, you know, you have to answer questions relative, did you decline more than three years in a row? Yes. Or did you deficit spend more than three years in a row? Yes. And then, if so many of those yeses, we'll kick you into an in-depth review. They also look at things where, you know, you mentioned before, are you dependent on outside sources, like parcel tax revenue, things of that nature. I'm not sure if I'm answering your questions, but-
Well, I, I, I see several not mets under 5B.
Okay, let's go there. What page are you on?
Page 196. Is this something that's just generated by the computer, or does someone literally go through and answer it?
It's, it's extracted, and then if it's kicked out, then you have to basically say whether, you know, there's an explanation if it's not met. And so basically, here it says-
Is this the same data that's on, starts on page 23 as well? Because if it is, the 20, 23 is easier to read.
Yeah, there you go. Exactly.
Is, is a little bit easier to read.
Yeah, I'm looking for that.
Well, I didn't mean to.
Well, I'm looking at the standard now.
A very long, long silence, or-
No, I'm just looking comparative districts and stuff.
I just would find it helpful to, to-
So here's the explanation, which is in the box below. It says, basically, they think the standard should be about 2%. And it's saying salaries and benefits in '08-'09 are slightly higher than standard 2% due to 3% salary increase plus an additional 1% salary compaction for certificated.
.2%.
Right. .2%. So that's, that's the deviation.
Basically, the standard, according to the standard, the salary increases were .2% too much?
Well, greater than that, based on what they saw on trend.
Saw on what?
Trend. That's what it looks like here. Budget year, first subsequent, second subsequent.
Well, it's that, I was curious about that.
Right.
Some of the other no's rather than yeses, I, I don't understand well enough to even know how to ask a question.
I had to look at that for a little while now.
But there's nothing in, in here. I mean, I would just ask you, are you aware of anything in here that we should focus on? I'm, I'm trying to find the one, I used to remember the number, but there was one that had a, or a comment a couple of years ago that was very, you know, a pretty, a pretty strong warning that we had problems, and some-
Well, I, I think that-
There were two. One of them was, are you aware of any reports that we are in fiscal distress?
Yeah, and that's-
I can't find that right now, but-
Yeah, and that was added by AB 2756, which is the Dasher bill, and basically says, we have to provide the county office, you know, any reports that show any kind of fiscal distress.
25, page 35.
Page 25. And then usually, there's flags. If, if you show a multi-year pattern of deficit spending, or if you've overestimated ADA, all those things are red flags, but we use prior year guarantees, so it's not likely we're going to overestimate our ADA because we already know what it is. You know, we projected we were going to have a deficit spending pattern, but we curtailed that, so we kind of preempted that. So those are the two things that are most significant. If you have reports showing any kind of fiscal distress, you know, that's, like I said, something that you have to report to the county office. And we've provided them with everything that's been done over the last six months. Available reserves is another one. You can see 8 is the deficit spending issue there. So you can see 8B, calculating districts' deficit spending percentages, status met. We met all those, so no danger there. Fund balance is all met.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Parker?
I've got a few. First of all, when do we get to move from negative certification to positive certification?
I actually have a couple of things to report on that. One is, what will happen is that we will submit this to the county office, and they have until August 15 to approve the budget, disapprove it, or conditionally approve it. Given that, you know, our multi-years, which we've been working closely with the county office, are not even marginal at the 3%, they're way beyond, you know, we're in 7% range, it should be a clean approval. The other thing I was going to add, I shared with Dr. Sarvis today, I learned we did our trans closing, and, you know, we were worried about, you know, the impact of the negative cert on our credit rating. And as it turns out, based on what we had done over the last several months, Moody's gave us what's called Mig 1, which is Moody's Investment Grade 1, which is the highest rating you can get on a trans. Which is kind of extraordinary, given that we had a negative cert.
Quite the recovery.
Yeah. Another question, Meals for Needy money funds, is that still going to the general fund?
Yeah, it's still retained in, in the general fund. It's a add-on to the revenue limit. So unless you look at the revenue limit detail, which I could take you there, it's embedded in just all the other unrestricted revenue limit, you know, and that's always an issue. There's a couple of issues with Meals for Needy. One is we're making a contribution to the cafeteria fund of like 200, whatever I said, $64,000. I think the Meals for Needy add-on in the one district's like $300,000. So you're giving it to them one way or the other, you know. But the one issue with Meals for Needy is that Meals for Needy and Good Times is adjusted by cost of living adjustments, and it's also increased by your count. So if you increase your participation, then you can increase your actual Meals for Needy add-on to the revenue limit. And if you can do that at the same time that the state's having economic good times, you can actually have, you know, make it grow exponentially. So I've been talking to Nancy Weiss about, you know, that issue and, and, you know, how we need to really focus on, you know, driving up participation, because if they do that, ultimately, it will not only pay off now, but it'll pay off later once, you know, those cost of living adjustments are basically restored, and they will be restored, you know, hopefully retroactively.
And my last question is, I have a specific one on, in April, the budget, the board looked at the budget and made cuts and kept specific programs. One of the things that we were looking at, right now, we have 1.0 FTE librarians at each of our secondary schools. And one of the things that we looked at was replacing the retiring librarians with library technicians. The board voted not to do that. So does this budget include 1.0 FTE librarian at every site?
It, it reflects exactly what you approved.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'd like to move to approve adoption of the 2008, 2009 budget and the 2, and the '08-'09 fiscal year, I'm sorry, the '08-'09 fiscal year budget.
Second, and thank you for asking the question about the negative certification and good news about our rating.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Smith. This was a really readable document.
We're on to E3, approval of MOU with Santa Barbara County Education Office for preparation of a joint response to the City of Santa Barbara Redevelopment Agency request for a proposal to move maintenance MNO to RDA. Let's get all the abbreviations in here. Development of a school facility.
Well, this is another one the clock's already ticking on. On June 18, I, at our board meeting on June 18, the City of Santa Barbara was considering a request for proposals. The City of Santa Barbara Redevelopment Agency issued that request for proposals for a development project on 2.4 acres just north of the railroad tracks off of Calle Cesar Chavez. The school district has long been interested in relocating maintenance and operations to a better facility. We've had discussions with the city in the past. At one point, the city was offering up some 1.3 acres. We didn't think that was enough money. We didn't have any money to actually move the, I'm sorry, did you want? Oh, you could do that. I-
Right now?
You know, it would be helpful for you to do that.
Okay, sorry. I was supposed to announce this before we started this item, that it doesn't look like we're going to get to the English learner report at the end of the meeting. And so staff or public that is here for that, that we're probably going to have to move that to another meeting. That's something that we could actually move off. And the other things are more time certain, so we're going to have to leave that, even though it says that's where we're going right now.
Okay. Let me go back to this. So, so RDA, Redevelopment Agency issued a request for proposals for the property. We've been very interested in that for a number of years, and we think at 2.4 acres, there is enough property for us to squeeze maintenance and operations, parking, truck, delivery space onto that property, even though, as you saw, that property has reservation for wetland area for the turtles, has a bike path going along it, and already has some parking spaces obligated to it. The community academy that we had talked about for the build-out of this property has since been located to the Lacumbra Porta Suelo Avenue campus. The county of office, education offices, has also been struggling with an issue, and that issue is the appropriate location for El Puente Community School. The school was started in 1988, and El Puente serves at-risk students, many of whom are from our junior highs and high schools, primarily high schools. And the, the facility is greatly in need of improvement. Well, the county ed office, in fact, I have with me a couple of people from the county education office. I have Jan Clevenger, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Categorical and Special Programs, and have Fred Razzo here, who is the Administrator for Court and Community Schools, has been looking for more appropriate space and has not been able to find that space. And in discussions with some people from the city, a plan was hatched, and that plan was to submit a proposal for the removal of maintenance and operations from this property, relocating it into new facilities on this 2.4 acres, and in the place of our old maintenance and operations property, to build a community school to house El Puente's students. And the community school would be built using state funds. We happen to have one of the few people who have built any community schools with state funds, and that's Eric Smith, who has built three around the state. We checked into, Dave Hetney, I checked into the Proposition 1D funding available at the state level. They now have $5.5 billion available for construction, and of that, that includes $1.3 billion for new construction. So we think this is very doable at this point, but what we would be asking the board for is their approval for a memorandum of understanding to work with the county education office and work up a proposal to submit to the redevelopment agency and the city. Now, I would like either Jan or Fred to speak to that as well. Would you like to do that under public? Would you like to do that under public comments or would you like to do that now?
Sure. I'm a little confused about one thing. Paragraph two here talks about El Puente at 720 Santa Barbara Street. Does that mean the Garden Street property?
It really means Garden Street, yes.
All right.
In fact, the entry to that would be off Garden Street. We currently go into that property primarily off of Santa Barbara Street, but we would want to change that in the future.
And then the, there was some talk about El Puente going into the Ortega Street property.
And that's not being discussed at this point?
That's not part of this?
No.
No. Can you give a question?
No, I thought, I thought there was some talk about, I thought it was separate.
Yeah, okay.
I will also say that, you know, in our discussion about projections, about enrollment projections for the district, in the event that our elementary enrollment increases significantly at some point, and, you know, these enrollment swings are 25, 30, 40-year cycles, at some point, we may need a downtown school. And there is still the possibility that this property on Ortega, which is already classrooms, combined with this property on Santa Barbara Street, which is now the district office and was, well, we had plans, just as I became superintendent, to convert it to classrooms and I essentially pulled the plug, saying, well, we don't have $30 million to convert this to classrooms, to relocate district office to some other rented property or constructed property, and to relocate MNO so that we could build a multipurpose room and classrooms to house a full elementary school here on this property. But if we did obtain school facilities on this maintenance and operations property some 30, 40 years down the road, that could become part of an elementary school. Of course, that would have to be in the agreement with the county as well.
Would that be rented or?
At this point, it'd be on a lease basis and at this point, our full intention would be at no cost to the district to develop new maintenance facilities on RDA property and at no cost to the district or county to develop community school facilities on Garden. That's our intention right now.
And the, and on top of that, to get a revenue stream from leasing it?
Well, the revenue stream would probably be $1 a year.
That's why it sounded a little bit more fair.
Yes, but I wanted to establish that we would not be giving that property to the county.
I think you may have answered my question, but I was wondering what our financial liability would be for the construction of the facility on the MNO area. So am I, did I hear you correctly in saying that we would, it would be no cost to the district?
We will bring the proposal back to you before we submit it to the, to the city, but that's our intention right now.
Okay.
So the funding would come from the state bonds?
Would come from redevelopment agency and from state bonds.
And that can pay for an MNO facility?
The RDA.
The RDA can pay for that part, okay. Thank you so much for clarifying about the, because I was really concerned that the MNO is an elementary district site and this needs to sort of be a viable option sometime in the future, just in case enrollment ever increases dramatically at this point, to the point where we'd need another school. I just wanted to be sure that we were not closing off all options for future boards.
But that, that sounds, I mean, it'd be very hard to evict them. It'd be very hard for a board to evict them. And I don't think, I'm not sure that it makes much difference with what you say. It'd be very hard for, you have the right to evict them, but, I mean, it would seem to me like this is probably pretty permanent. And I would think that in the county's interest, they would want to make sure that it was as permanent as it could be.
Well, and this board has seen how difficult it is to move programs, whether it's to locate community academy to another school site or to locate elements of our continuation program to another school site. I mean, that all takes time, but those changes do get made.
Well, that's true, but I'm just saying that it's not a very powerful argument to say, yeah, but in the future, we could use it for a downtown school. I don't think that's much of a cut.
Well, that was why we didn't bring any proposals to you to develop condominiums or office space on this property, because we did want to preserve it as school space.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Under, in paragraph C, under the recitals, it says 724 Santa Barbara Street. Is that a typo or does MNO have a different address?
MNO has an address of 724 Santa Barbara Street. It was, it's reflected in two paragraphs at the beginning and in the end, it still says 720 when it should say 724. So it should be 724 consistently.
Should change that then? Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
I want to say, this almost makes me a little bit nervous. I feel like the planets are aligning here. It's almost too good to be true. I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Well, we would still be asking for the city's good graces on all of this.
We'd love to hear you speak.
We've discussed several ideas over the past few months with the city and the, and the schools and the county office regarding building community partnerships to address the needs of RUs who are struggling in our educational programs and in our city. This collaborative joint effort with the Santa Barbara School District and the Santa Barbara County Education Office is a demonstration of our commitment and goal to work toward positive solutions and meeting the needs of the U's in our community. This collaborative effort will benefit hundreds of U's in the first year of operation and thousands in years to come, creating a relevant and viable educational program to ready our U's for the current demands of college and preparation for today's workforce requirements will greatly enhance our community. This is an enormous and historic step forward toward addressing some of the problems facing our U's today, as well as assisting families struggling with their children. The combined resources and outcomes that this collaboration can bring forward to our educational programs and community is immeasurable. I'm ecstatic and hopeful that this request for proposal is accepted and moves forward without delay. Any questions or? Very good, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion at this point.
Sure, and was, did anybody else want to come speak on? Did you like, no, you're fine? Okay.
I want to express some more thoughts and concerns. This isn't really, this isn't much different than selling the property in some sense, because it takes the property out of our U's and, and apropos of my prior comments. And when I look at that way, when I look at it that way, I'm a little concerned. And I also have, just have to wonder, we come out awash because we have MNO on our new site, but we have lost the control of property. Why couldn't the district seek the site down there for MNO independently of giving up this elementary district property on Ortega, on Garden Street?
That we would simply?
I mean, do we have to have the partnership? I have nothing against the county, I just feel it's my responsibility to ask some questions like this.
Well, for the city to pump that money into it, to essentially give us the property, whether it's leased property or they actually give us the property, is another question, but, and build us a maintenance and operations facility, we think there needs to be something in it for the city. And they think, and there's been some discussion of this among people on the Youth Violence Committee, they think that for our at-risk youth to have an appropriate facility and have a facility, in fact, and Fred and I have had long discussions about possibility of trade school type activities, whether they're ROP or whether there, there are some career tech programs at the school in addition to what they already have, they think that that would be an advantage. And we think it would be an advantage for essentially our kids too, who attend county programs.
So is the city essentially saying, we want to see a partnership with the county?
We think it would take that kind of a partnership to really make it advantageous for the city to see this as something that's very useful to the city.
I just want to chime in on these particular thoughts and that is, there's, well, I mean, I think there's very little incentive for the city to move our MNO to RDA property without some other quid pro quo. And this sounds like a potential quid pro quo. But the other piece is, is that even assuming that they did want to move our MNO to RDA property and we're willing to foot that bill, we have no money to do anything with what currently exists on that property. It's not appropriate for any particular use as far as I know or, you know, can determine. Certainly, it's not appropriate for any educational use right now, as it exists, even vacant. And I guess I would like to think that there are a lot of opportunities for collaboration if the county has a school facility there. You know, a, you know, some kind of multipurpose room that might be available to us. Programs for our students that might be, you know, available on some collaborative basis. So I guess I would like to think in a more, in the direction of potentials. But I think that you raised, you know, really good questions. I'm just not sure what, what use we could put that property to, assuming that we're vacated.
Well, I could rent it. It's worth quite a bit of money in terms of rental income. I have no problem thinking of uses of it. I just, I wanted to see, I didn't quite see the pieces, the city is involved, but the argument is that, that the city has a great benefit in seeing the county find a location for that, for El Puente, and I just wanted to try to flesh that out. It didn't all, it doesn't all just fit together automatically for me, anyway.
Well, there have been no formal discussions, there's been no city council action on this, but we think this will fly. And we think it's an advantage to us, we think it's an advantage to the county, and we think the city sees it or will see it as an advantage to them as well.
Yes, for sure.
Please.
Thank you.
Maybe you could introduce yourself.
Jan Clevenger, Assistant Superintendent, SB CEO. I think the selling point on this or the thing that Fred and I and the office is excited about is that this is a win-win for everybody, truly. One, it's a win-win for the district, Santa Barbara district, in that the opportunity to have a maintenance, new maintenance yard, et cetera. At the same time, offer the property of the existing site for El Puente to relocate to. And you need to remember that 99% of the students that are at that school are your district students that we are helping to serve. And so we believe that this is a very, excuse me, attractive partnership with long-term ramifications of being nothing but positive. So that's what's exciting for us. I think that's what's exciting in sitting down and talking with Brian and Eric about it, is that, you know, there's a tremendous amount of potential here to better serve the kids in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
It was a good discussion. I actually started to make a motion to approve the memo of understanding with the Santa Barbara County Education Office for the preparation of a joint response to City and Santa Barbara Redevelopment Agency request for proposals to move maintenance and operations to redevelopment property and development of a school facility.
Second, will we vote on this again after it comes back or is this it?
No, this is, I, this is just a very, I see a very first preliminary step in a very long series of steps.
That's what I figured, that's what I'm, yeah.
We would bring a proposal to you before we took it to the.
This is just our agreement to go forward with the county, but still has to go to the city.
Although time is of the essence, I mean, we need to get our proposal to the city. Dave, do you remember August 8? Is that 21st? Thank you.
I just wanted to clear that up, that this isn't, this isn't a final vote on this. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we're on to E4, approval of the 2008, 2009 revisions of the LEAP plan for the Santa Barbara School Districts.
And Robyn Swawsky, our new Associate Superintendent, will deliver this.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make this short and I don't normally read stuff, but I'm going to read it because when I was thinking a little bit more clearly earlier this morning, or this afternoon, I wrote out what I wanted to say. But I first wanted to also introduce Carol Johansson from Santa Barbara County Education Office, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and she and her office helped us tremendously in building the revision of our LEAP plan. So you can tell from the memo that the background, of course, is that the State Board of Education adopted a series of corrective actions for the 97 school districts in year three of program improvement under No Child Left Behind federal law, and you know that we are in that category. We, of course, as I shared earlier, in the light technical assistance area, however, the Santa Barbara School District must, the elementary, I'm going to make sure it's clearly understood that it is the elementary school district at this point, must revise its local educational agency plan, better known by many of us as the LEAP, and submit the revisions by July 1, 2008. Before I move into the, I know you got colored copies of it and understand that the yellow sections mean those are revisions and parts that we've added, a lot of new sections, I want to note that on the, I know, a lot.
Highlighting yours is that something stands out from something else.
Well, in the beginning it is, because we added the key findings and the work with the county office. But before you even get to that section, I wanted to make a note, because it's often been a discussion that we've had on the district budget for federal programs and state programs, and because the, many of the categorical funding, the federal grants run through September, this is a reflection of like 75% of the school year. So when we ended, and this is actually over a week ago, that the, the exact amounts were put in, so you'll see the percentages run from 77%, 83%. What caught my eye immediately was a 90% for special ed, because here we are encroaching by millions and it's 90%. That's a reflection of staff that hadn't been paid yet. And so you can follow along, the 5% in Title V was intentionally saved there for programs for next year and in particular, part of our, say, all the Standards Aligned Instructional Leadership Program for our administrators. So that might help or maybe, I'm sure you had questions on that. So I worked with Eric a little bit on that and we decided, oh, of course, you know, it's only 75% of the school year for most of them. They're a little lower in federal than on state because some of the state programs end. So I wanted to explain that. Also attached to the memo, the agenda memo, is the rubric that the state uses for the revision and that's right behind in the packet. I have filled out already and will be working with the county to make sure that the location in the LEA plan reflects the page numbers and all of that. I've done it, but I want to make sure yours does not. Yours is the, the one that just has the empty numbers. It's, I see some quizzical faces. It's the, it's right behind the memo in the, before you even get to the plan, it's the revision rubric that we used in order to meet all the requirements. And this was where the county office was particularly helpful in helping us, you know, I kind of said, okay, we need to know what the state's looking for exactly and then we need to make sure that it fits into our plans and what we know is going to be best for our district schools. So that's just to show you kind of what we were working from. And in that, it And in that, it also highlights the nine essential program components. We've called them EPCs, and you see that through the plan. Those are what the state has been saying for, oh, gosh, I want to say five, six years, at least, as the research-based, you know, elements that a standards-based program has. And so in front of you, you have revised key findings. I laid it out in front, yes. Because what I did, I didn't, I found a few typos in there, by the way, and maybe some of you, maybe Mrs. Parker found some typos. But I wanted to make sure that the EPCs, the Essential Program Components, were clearly designated on there. So you can see as we work through that they're clearer. So this is the version that will go to the state, so that it shows that.
And highlighted.
And highlighted, yes, in bright yellow. Okay, then, in the LEA plan, on page 10 is the revision process timeline. So you can see all of the people that have been involved. That's in the actual plan, and it just, it's included so that we can see the process, how we involved all of our stakeholders. We have the district collaborative team. And then following that is the key findings. And you'll note on there that all of our schools, all the PI schools, completed the academic program survey, which includes the Essential Program Components, and they also did one on English learners as well as special education. And I can see Mrs. Parker has a question.
No, I just have a quick question. I have never, and this is no reflection of the work that you've done, because I think it's a really thorough document. Never seen a more acronym-laden document.
Oh, it's, yeah, that's the state for you.
And here's my question. Under the very first box on the top of page 10, it says, "Completed DAS."
Okay, yes.
What is DAS? Because I didn't find.
District, yes, I'm sorry.
I know it's District something, I mean.
District Assistant Survey.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was, yes, as you can see, we did that in 2005.
Right.
And that's guided our work with the district collaborative team.
Okay.
And I apologize.
No, and then I struggled with DSLT, but I figured that one out.
Yes. What we decided to do is, as we move forward, our district collaborative team has been taking, it started out as an elementary focus, and it just kind of encompassed all of the program improvement schools, including some of the secondary, the two junior highs, which was a really good thing. But at this point, because our district is in program improvement, we want to narrow that a bit, and we'll have a district lead, we decided to name it differently, District Leadership, District Site.
Leadership.
Yeah, District Leadership and School, yeah, Team. Anyway, it's the, it's the, it's the one the state uses. So, and it is explained in the document, you're right. Any other questions on that timeline and different things that are listed?
EPC.
EPC is Essential Program Components, and those are, you know, the instructional pro, yes. That's actually really the most important piece, is how we're implementing those. So the actual plan with the dates and who's responsible and all of that, and attached to the money, is in the plan, and of course, I'm not going to go through the whole body of that. But I think another important piece, and you have a revision, is the Professional Development Five-Year Plan. And I apologize, the one that got in the book had number seven, I think it was math, instructional materials dropped off, so that's, somehow, this template, by the way, from the state, is just a beast. And we had a lot of people working on it and supporting it, and at one point, one page got dropped off. So you have the recent, it's on, in front of you, yes, and it says revised. So that does kind of play out all the work. So I'm just going to kind of summarize this, and then I'll take your questions. As the key findings suggest, and the rubric for the revision guides the LEAP, the main areas of focus must be on the selection and implementation of newly adopted materials, which this next year will be the math, and the following year, English Language Arts. That doesn't mean that we're not going to be working on that, you know, throughout this next year and the following year before we can get the new materials, but that's a huge emphasis in our plan and with the state. Along with that, of course, at the same time, is the teacher and administrative training to support that implementation, and standards-based instruction in particular. And you'll notice that the sale that I mentioned earlier, Standards-Aligned Instructional Leadership, that's going to be our principals at PLC, Professional Learning Community. And I was just thrilled that, first of all, the elementary principals all said, "We really need this as a vehicle to work together, to come away with some common skills and understand how to really target what we need in the district." And then the secondary principals jumped right on, and all but one at this point is saying, "We're going to be there as well," so it's going to be like a, and our child development coordinators as well. So it's pre-K through 12 professional learning community with our leadership, and so we're very excited about that. I think that'll move us ahead in a big way. And then the third thing that I think is probably the most critical is the focus on our high-priority students, our English learners, and then, of course, our special education students. And through that is the monitoring system of how well they're doing with those frequent assessments, benchmark assessments, as we call them, every six to eight weeks. And that's, of course, aligned with our electric, our electric, electronic report card. It is electric, I guess. And I think the key part, I mean, we've been building this, of course, since 2005. We haven't seen the results that we want. We've been very flat in our data, and, I mean, we, there's a real urgency. We know that we need to stay the course, because what we've been doing and building the capacity has really brought up a lot of kids from way down below, but they're not really up to the place where you can even see it yet. But we're, I think we're going to see some, I really do believe we're going to see some better results this year, knowing that it's just building even further as we put this other work into place. All of this work was led by some amazing teacher leaders, starting from back with our report card. We have the selection committees for the adoptions. We have our ELD, Teachers on Special Assignment, and new this year, English Language Development Site Liaisons that are working monthly after school with our TOSAs. And they're going to be like the champions or kind of monitoring person at the school to make sure they're tracking the English learner progress at each school. We have our Avid District and Site Liaisons. The Site Liaisons are new for next year. Then, of course, we had our Report Card and Assessment Committees, and also new this year is what we're calling a LEAP Committee. Teachers that come together at least four times a year to oversee the LEAP, how we're progressing. Some of those teachers may be one in the same, but our aim is to really build capacity and build leadership, and so the more people involved, the better. And we feel that's a good use of our categorical funding, to have more teachers involved in the leadership on this, and understanding standards-based instruction and how to lead our district out of program improvement. So I'll take questions, comments. It's a lot, I know it was a lot to get through, and I was hoping that the highlighted pieces, that's why you got yellow, you could look over those sections in particular. Yes, or, I guess, you go ahead.
Could you explain the relationship between this and the CONAP, the?
Oh, boy. The, yes.
We have this discussion long time ago at a meeting, and I just wanted to make sure, because it looks to me like you're doing this as you explain to them, that this drives the CONAP, the consolidated application.
Right. Exactly.
What I like when I see this, and I recall that conversation, because I had looked for that which drove the consolidated application. I see these things in the request for funds from the federal government, the CONAP, or part of federal funds from the state.
Right.
And I wouldn't make any connection, well, what, how did that get in there? And that was when you explained to me that it's the plan that does that. Well, we didn't even have plans on file, updated plans, but at that time, you'll recall. So all this, by the way, is saying, this is really welcome, although very dense.
It's very dense, but it does qualify us for the categorical funding.
Well, I look, you know, I look and see that this talks about the number, the problem that it's addressing, the solutions, in a sense, the number of persons involved, the related expenditures, the estimated costs, and the funding source. Then I can see where that then leads to the specific allocations of funds in the consolidated application.
Right.
And that coherence has been sorely lacking unless I'm misreading this.
No, that's.
It's here now, and thanks to you for that good work.
And I think the, a really important piece on what you just said is that LEAP Committee made up of teachers and administrators are going to be monitoring it all along the way to make sure that what we said we're going to do is really happening.
I just have one, 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 no question, because I also.
I said all that without being, sorry.
Oh.
The other question is simply, I'm all, I've learned how public agencies operate. The state says, "We want to see a plan." You submit the plan. I'm not sure they look at it after the first glance, and plans kind of live, and they're there, and my question always is, what gives them life on the turf? How does this, how does this get into the classroom? How does this get to the kid? And I see the connections, but is that what you're going to monitor?
Absolutely. Exactly. And, you know, this year.
Otherwise, we're just talk.
It's all talk, you're right, and it sits on the shelf. And that's one reason for those, the LEAP Committee, to actually bring it to the site and make sure that it's, we're monitoring how it's happening, how the money's being spent. We're looking into an online LEAP plan, similar to our single-school plans, which, of course, need to be aligned to this, so that it would be visible to anyone as the money's spent. We get to see where it's going, and it's linked to the goals. So we're, Dr. White is looking into seeing if that would work. I have to say that the Board of Education members this year with the 97 school districts said that they will be reading every one of these.
The state board?
That's what they said. Carol Johansson has heard them say that.
Because I had visions already of mountains of leaps.
I know. Oh, yes.
Saying Sacramento, somewhere there's a, there's a room, a big room.
Can I, are you, are you, can I, well, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the goals, and this ties so closely to that, and to me, this is strategies for reaching goals. Is there a way, I don't know, maybe something to think about, is how do we define whether we're succeeding? You're talking about accountability. How do we, you know, kind of measure this ourselves as a board, sorry?
Well, I get, I mean, what comes to mind for me automatically, of course, is student achievement, because that's what we're, our goals are all about. And with our monitoring system on our assessments, we're going to be more clear about how we're doing, you know, right off the bat, November, and then, you know, even for the trimesters. But how, I think that's how we would monitor in some ways, and then there will be other ways, but by adopting some of this for our board-focused goals or goals that we're working on, we will be in a much better place this next year to be able to monitor.
Well, just on that, I would love, because we've all said that we want to have this in front of us on a much more regular basis when we're talking about Latino student achievement and student achievement in general, it would be great when the district is looking at those assessments, that the board gets a copy of it as well to see, so that we can track it and keep it in our heads as we're going along as well. I just wanted to say, I'm very sorry that we're not adopting the Language Arts until 10/11.
We are too.
And I know that it's because we don't have the money to do it earlier, but I think it's very disappointing. I wanted to ask about High Point. It comes up as an intervention for fourth through sixth graders. That are two years behind, the English learners. And I just wanted to be really clear on this, because one of our schools, McKinley, has been using High Point as a core curriculum, and it has not been successful.
Yes.
And I want to be sure that this is a supplemental intervention curriculum for like an ELT time, and the kids will have access to the district curriculum.
Actually, I can explain that, and I've had some issues with that being a core curriculum at that school since I got here, and I know that it was introduced as being a little bit different, like the first section, first level was for fourth grade, second level was for fifth grade. It is a state-approved intervention program for fourth through eight, I believe. Is that correct, Carol? Or is it only fourth through six?
Fourth through six, but middle schools often use it.
Okay.
Even high schools.
Okay. So it is intervention, and it's intended for students two years or more below. That can replace the core for a very limited time. Because they are so far behind, it's very hard to access the core. We've not done that district-wide for the very reason you're wrinkling your noses. We didn't, you know, we didn't want to have our students, even when they're two years behind, not have access to our open court curriculum. McKinley, after their program review this year that the county led, they are going to open court, reading in the fourth through sixth grade. We're finding enough materials in the district to have that in place until we get the new materials in two years. And then the High Point materials, we have extras in our secondary, we know. So we're going to pull those for a very limited number of students who we target as being at least two years behind, and would benefit from that program. I think we will, you know, I'm assuming we'll, I know we'll go through student study team and all the processes to make sure that that's the best program for those children that we say should be in high grade.
If it's something that's at the end of an SST process as opposed to something that's a school-wide situation, I think that that might be appropriate. I just, I would hate to see us limiting what, limiting student access to what everybody else gets at the more successful schools.
Right, and we would definitely not have that be one test measure. I mean, there's no way we would just use the STAR as an indicator. We would have a lot of multiple measures before we would take a child out of the core curriculum.
And it also says that it's, that you're going to look for materials at other sites at the junior highs, I assume, and it would go to the program improvement schools, but we have program improvement schools that are percolating and multiplying, and, you know, really, within the next three years, probably everybody will be a program improvement school. So I'm just wondering if, in fact, this is something where we want you to buy materials for it.
Well, we have one more year of doing this, and then we're, well, two years, really, and then we're going to be selecting our new English Language Arts materials. So we know that at the junior high level and high school, the lower levels, which is what we would be using at the fourth through sixth grade, we have some extra additions there. So we're really not concerned. We don't want to spend any more money on, you know, that adoption, because the English Language Arts slash ELD adoptions coming out are just very comprehensive and include ELD materials, and then there's intervention programs along with that.
Good. And my one last question is, this document refers a lot to collaboration, you know, grade-level teams and hopefully, you know, vertical teaming and things like that. But the elementary district has not had professional learning community training. Is there a plan to bring in the county, for example, to do PLC training for the elementary district teachers?
We can certainly do that. Some schools have. I know that McKinley's had some, you know, not a lot. We haven't, as a district, gone and seen Rick DeForre, maybe some isolated people have. So, yes, we could certainly have the county come and help us with that. We have had a lot of training and grade-level meetings, some sites have, not all of them. And we just haven't called our grade-level collaboration professional learning communities. You know, it's one of those things where you don't want to just title it something and then have someone think they're doing that when they really have no idea what that looks like and the kind of work that needs to happen there. But we are, we're, for the implementation of our Report Card and Assessments, we're doing partner schools, and we very intentionally are putting schools together that we think could really learn from each other, from the principals to the staffs, and having them meet regularly through the year on the training with the Report Card as well as the assessments, and then looking at their results together, and identifying grade-level district chair teachers that could then help facilitate that. And they would be the first to get that training, so that they could facilitate their grade-level meetings.
Hopefully, I'd like to move. I'd like to move to adopt the revisions of the Local Education Agency Plan, better known as the LEAP.
I'll second.
And but before we take the vote, we have public comment. Lane Wheeler.
This is Brian Tangway, and I will be back here at 5:00 AM. I'll be very brief. I just, this is a very aggressive plan. There are some components that I believe need some flushing out yet that Robin and I have not had a chance to discuss and go over, but just a couple of points. The PLC model that you mentioned, Ms. Parker, what we've found at the secondary is that requires time. Also, the. Also, the RTI implementation, our past survey, and we have another one coming out, has indicated that it has increased workload. We're not sure that it is affecting the kids in the way we want. There's some discussion about a whole model for a school being used or a whole classroom being used rather than targeting those specific kids that need that intervention. So I believe that needs some more implementation. Also, the monthly collaboration where it says that teachers will be meeting between 50 and 60 minutes per week, or per, twice per month. I'm, I'm wondering once again where that comes into the curricular day and is that time going to be supplanted by the provision of specialists who have been brought in using site monies to, to, or certificated teachers are going to be teaching a specific curriculum that will be able to release teachers? Or are we talking about after school? So just, you know, once again, good, good plan. I just want to make sure that the specifics of those, I think as several of you mentioned, get fully developed and we know in advance before we launch into something and then find issue with it in the, on the backside. So once again, I look forward to continuing that. Thank you.
You have a motion? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
E5, approval of the Aetna, of Aetna as Santa Barbara School District's new health insurance provider.
And Chris Robertson, our personnel director, will make this presentation.
Good evening. Thank you. The insurance committee is made up of classified, certificated confidential and management staff. And we met with our broker, Alliant Insurance, since January of 2008 to review health plan proposals. Because of the difficulty we had with Blue Shield, Sanson and Cottage and the negotiations for what we'd hoped would be affordable plans, we requested that Alliant aggressively pursue other vendors for us to take a look at in order to find something more affordable for our employees while being able to maintain the quality of the current plans that we have. The insurance committee reviewed four plans in particular that were made available to us. Those Aetna, Cigna, Blue Shield and Kaiser. The insurance committee has determined that the proposal submitted by Aetna is more to our liking and will meet our needs. Blue Shield Insurance Company, who we've been with the last several years, was asking for an increase that is unrealistic and no longer meets the needs of our staff or being affordable. As a result, the insurance committee is agreeing that we need a new insurance carrier. You have attached in your doc, book, a copy of the financial proposal and I'm going to ask Brian Tangway to come up and just do a brief presentation for you on, that'll summarize what the insurance committee has done, what we're looking at and some costs. And then if we have questions, he and Lane Wheeler and myself would be happy to answer those. And I'll come back to the recommendation as soon as he's done with his presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. The reason we're coming back at 5:00 in the morning is to go down to Hawthorne to look at universal breakfast and how it's delivered. So we're, yeah, we're, we're really insane. Okay. So our renewal process, if I can make this work. Dr. Robertson talked about our committee and this is who it's comprised of. One thing I wanted to say about this that's, I think is significant is that some of these people have been on here for four years now. So we have, we are starting to build up some expertise in the area of health insurance and health plans and that is starting to make the process go a little bit smoother because we don't have to go through all the vocabulary and what it all means every year. It also makes us work a little bit more effectively with our brokers since they know that we're more educated. So she alluded to the arena and the, the person on the left, it looks like a female, but it's really Dr. Sarvis. After last fall's public battle between Blue Shield and Sanson in which the superintendent had to go and talk to the CEO of Sanson, we knew we were going to get hit with a high renewal this year. There was little question that that was going to happen. So one of the things we did in January is we decided as a committee, we had to get a lot smarter, even, even more so than we had. So Dr. Robertson, Lane Wheeler, Elaine Alvarado and I, we attended a, a training put on by the California Education Coalition for Healthcare Reform or CHECER. It's a labor management partnership created to address this very issue that we're always dealing with year after year, runaway health costs for public agencies. So some of the things we learned going through the training was how to work more effectively with insurance brokers, how to write an RFP that actually works for our interests and meets our needs, how to carve out high cost hospital procedures and pharmacy services. And that's an important point because it's going to lead us to, to explore some alternatives that we haven't tried before. Some of the marketing factors, our loss ratio for claims from April 1st, 2007 through March 31st of 2008 was 85.2 percent. It's not too bad. Some, when it goes, when you look at it from month to month, sometimes you'll see some months where the loss ratio is 95, 98, 79. So it does vary depending on what claims are being paid. During the same period, hospital claims rose by 24.5 percent to $400,000 and that is the result of our being essentially a captive of Cottage Hospital. We don't have anywhere to go except Cottage. And our claim experience includes nine cases each exceeding $100,000 in, in claims, in paid claims. So you can see what, what they range. Some of our employees and dependents, heart attack, cancer, small intestinal tumor and so on. Big health events that are very expensive. So we go out to bid, Aetna, Cigna, Blue Shield, Kaiser submit bids. Now Kaiser submitted a bid because we, one of the things we asked about was a hospital carve out. Essentially, the question we asked a broker is can we use hospitals other than Cottage for non-emergency planned procedures? So can we go to UCLA Medical Center? Can we go to Ventura? Can we go to Camarillo? Can we go somewhere other than Cottage to find a better price, to, to inject some competition into our market? So Kaiser did come back and offer us a plan for some of our employees who live in specific zip codes in Ventura County. So we're going to have a standalone plan from Kaiser for those people. And that was our, a result of our asking the question. Anthem, Blue Cross, Health Net, United Healthcare declined a bid. And as Dr. Robertson said, Blue Shield's initial renewal proposal comes in at 13.2 million, a 25.1 percent increase or, or $2.6 million over our current year premiums. It's a big, big number. Aetna's initial proposal, 17.6 percent higher than our current premium and Cigna, we eliminated because they could not match the network and they had some cost issues as well. Again, the first, the first bullet is, is that Kaiser was able to offer us a standalone plan. We have 83 or so people who will be affected and will be able to use Kaiser services. Our fully insured status made it impossible for us to carve out high cost hospital procedures. In other words, we won't be able to go to UCLA Medical, Ventura, Camarillo, wherever. We also looked at carving out our RX plan, our pharmacy benefit and just having it as a standalone plan between us and a pharmacy benefit manager with no middleman as a way to save some money. It's an idea that does merit future consideration when the district is on a little bit more sound financial footing because it does require that we assume some risk. And this year was probably not the best year to assume additional risk. Aetna's plan design comes in, it looks identical to what we have now, which is very important because the last thing we want to do for our employees and dependents is have disruption in providers, a lot of switching of doctors. People don't like to switch doctors. We know that. So we want to keep provider network as transparent as possible. And on June 4th, we met with Aetna's management clinical and implementation team. We liked very much what, what we heard. They just signed a contract with Santa Barbara County. They do the city of Santa Barbara. They have a very good approach to the conversion from Shield to Aetna so there won't be any, any hiccups and/or a lot of extra work for our personnel department, which is really important. So we went back, of course, negotiations. That's Eric Smith on the right. Alliant asked Blue Shield and we, we asked them, go back and get them to sharpen their pencils. Let's see what they can do for us. Blue Shield comes back with a massive reduction to 23.7 percent because they really wanted our business, as you can see by that. Aetna was a little bit more reasonable. They dropped theirs to 15 percent, which is worth 274,000. And in a district like ours, that's not chump change. And Aetna also made a very interesting offer, $60,000 for employee outreach and health education. And what they mean by that is for one of the months, and we'll pick the month, they will drop their bill by $60,000. And we will use the savings to educate our employees about how to use our plans, how to be healthy, how to do the right things, how to get your preventative tests. This is going to take a lot of outreach because one of the best ways we can control costs or try to control costs is learn how to use the plans to the, to the best benefit of the employees and for the district. So that's a great benefit. So our recommendations, we go to Aetna for our medical insurance. For dental, we stay with Anthem and Blue Cross. They're the incumbent. For life and accidental death, we go to Aetna and for vision, we stay with VSP. So if you have any questions at this late hour, I'll be happy to let Lane Wheeler answer all of them. Thank you.
Well, this is always a very interesting process every year and so our ability to be able to move forward on this recommendation tonight is extremely important because the next thing we'll need to do then is go back and negotiate the costs. And we'll be working very closely with Eric and both of the unions in this regard. But at this point in time, it is recommended that the board approve Aetna Insurance Company as our new health insurance provider for 2008, 2009 school year.
I'm happy to make the motion. I, just, just an observation that we're an extremely captive audience in Santa Barbara with, with just one hospital. And I want to compliment the insurance committee on really getting creative and also using our leverage. We are a lot of employees using our leverage to try and create the best plan possible. So a motion to approve Aetna as Santa Barbara School District's new health insurance provider for the '08, '09 school year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Bon appétit. Bon voyage.
Yeah. We'll leave right now. Get there.
Yeah. E6, we have approval of the superintendent's contract for a one-year extension.
I believe.
Do I need to?
You're going to make this presentation?
Yeah, I guess so. And I guess I can read, I don't know if you want me to read this front page, but the amendment is to change over the expense allowance and the retirement contribution and instead put that on salary.
Why don't you read the entire statement?
Okay. All right. The board is being requested to approve the amendments to the superintendent's contract. As reflected in the attached document, it is proposed that the superintendent's contract term be extended for one year, additional year until June 30th, 2011. In like fashion with prior year extensions, in addition, the proposed amendment will discontinue the superintendent's $600 monthly expense allowance and the, and $5,000 annual Internal Revenue Code 403B retirement contribution in lieu of those two things. Therefore, corresponding sums would be added to the superintendent's annual base salary of 11, there would be $11,270 would be added on and state teacher's retirement annual contribution, $930 for a net zero adjustment, meaning it's a, it would be a wash. It would not cost the district any additional funds. This will result in removing the current discrepancy between salaries that depend on the superintendent and the superintendent.
We have public comment. Shall we go ahead and, all right. Rich Foster.
It doesn't seem that this is a net zero sum because it affects retirement salary and may Sarvis, Mr. Sarvis live a long and healthy life and collected for 40 years, but it will affect her CalPERS basis then because he's going to have a higher salary. So fundamentally, this statement is not accurate. As far as extending the contract, we have a district that's in program improvement. We've had budgetary fiasco after fiasco after fiasco. We've had musical chairs on our administrative level. If we need to pay a lot more money to get better help, maybe we should, but perhaps it's time to start looking for somebody else to do the job because the track record the last few years here is very, very poor. And we've been told that it's because we're not paying enough to get good help. Maybe this is the time to start looking. Thank you.
Can I address that? It was, if you multiply the 600 times 12, it comes out to be less than this because we're taking that into consideration. Did I say that? I didn't think I said that very well. Very well. Let's try that again.
So when you're saying net zero adjustment, you're meaning that includes factoring in the extra retirement?
Yes. Because it would have been, is, maybe Nathan, maybe you can say that better than I did. No. Is that something you want to try to say? No. I thought you would.
I don't know if I necessarily have anything to add, except I think you're correct that those numbers were run in such a fashion so that it would, you know, taking everything into consideration, achieve a net zero result on the, on the balance sheet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve the superintendent's contract for one-year extension with the other adjustments that we just discussed.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Okay. So it's, I, I don't usually do that. So it's four, zero and one abstention.
We have a last item here that we can do tonight is, even though it's past 10:30, but the board action on student expulsion case numbers.
Case number 0708-75, move to approve the stipulated agreement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
In the case of 0708-76, move to approve the suspended expulsion, findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Do the next one.
Oh. In the case 0708-81, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining.
So it's four with one abstention, harder.
In the case number 0708-83, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
0708-86, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Case number 0708-87, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
I abstain.
Oh. Oh, yours, aye, right. So it passes five zero. I said that correctly, right? Okay. And we don't have any consent agenda items to go back to. Coming events, board comments, correspondence, future agenda items. We of course have to come back to the report on the English learner program.
We will move that, yes. And we have a board meeting scheduled this Friday at 1:30.
And then the following one will be July 8th.
Good.
Okay? Anything else? No? We are done.